Crossways.
You know.
I see an old lady when I run.
It's been a few years.
I was definitely more people.
Hello.
She got wheels on her in here.
Yeah.
Please that wheel line. Angelo.
We're here. Yeah. What we can find our clerk? You're gonna start about two minutes just when I pass my passing, so you don't have anything uh right on. I left to pop up that age. You have everything.
Yeah.
Sir, do you know from Charlotte to here? She got. You're for the example.
We can.
We have that okay, whatever you need. Whatever you need, just let us know what you need. We're gonna be back. Uh Mariana, Chief of Staff. Mariana, you? Thank you. Thank you, Bob. Find water. Yeah. I do. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you so much for joining us here today. Uh just a few housekeeping rules, please keep your phones on silent. I asked from the audience to save all your comments. Okay, sorry about that. We'll start this all over. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for joining us here today. Uh but before I call the meeting to order, just a few housekeeping rules. Um asking that we all keep it respectful. Um like I said in the last meeting, we can all agree to disagree, but it's very, very important. It's actually imperative that we all keep it respectful. Uh if your phones are on, I ask you to put them on silent. If there's anything that you don't like, I asked no clapping, no applause. Uh nothing from the audience. And I'm asking that this meeting keeps it quick, simple, sweet. We're here to make a decision. Uh nobody wants to see the city go into a potential of a shutdown because, you know, bunch of adults that love this community couldn't come together to find a reason to get a balanced budget and to be fiscally responsible. I don't believe in my heart that the administration wants this, and I can tell you, I can assure you that nobody on this council wants to see that as well. Um with that being said, Madam Clerk, uh today is June twenty eighth, twenty twenty four, special meeting of the Dearborn Heights City Council. Madam Clerk, we are calling the order at five oh five, can you please take roll call? Yo, I think we'll.
Hassan Ahmad.
Uh President.
Moby Dune.
Here.
Nancy Breyer.
Here.
Robert Coniston.
President.
Denise Malinowski Maxwell.
Here.
Hassan Saab.
President.
Tom Wenzel.
Here.
Mr. Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Um before we do start a meeting, to move over to the Pledge of Allegiance. Uh I do wanna give a moment of silence. Today, I know we just lost another following officer, our officers who serve and protect us day in and day out. William Butler Junior survived by his uh, sorry, served by his wife and three children. Uh Deputy at Hillside Sheriff's Department. Let's go ahead and give him one moment of silence for him and for all the following police officers in our country. Thank you. I'm gonna ask Officer Choker, but she's not here. She in the room? You know what? We have our President of our uh Police Department who's gonna lead us in our Pledge of Allegiance today. The President of the Police Officers Union.
Of the United States of America. To the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with every vision of the Lord.
Thank you. Next up, we have agenda approval.
Council Chair.
Councilman Ahmad.
I moved that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the agenda for the special meeting of June twenty eighth. I submitted.
So, hard. Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilman Constant. Any discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye. Aye. Those opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries. Next up, we have approval of the minutes, there's none. Public hearings and comments on agenda items only. Uh this is open up to the public. We're gonna start off in person. If there's nobody here that has anything in person, we will take it to Zoom. I ask that you know, two minutes, state your name, the city you reside in, and the street that you live on. Obviously, there is only one thing on the agenda today, and that is the approval of this budget today.
This is off the agenda, buddy.
Hang on one second, one sir, if you're, if it's not on the agenda, I can't have you speak on, unless it's agenda items only. Public comments would be after.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone would like to speak on agenda items only? We state your name, the city you reside in, and the street that you live on.
Zuhair Abdullah Ha, three five four Rosemary, Dearborn Heights.
Thank you.
I just uh want to say, and I hope that you will approve the budget tonight. And you do what you got elected for by doing the right cuts or the additions, because the city had enough negative publicity. And the consequences of not approving the budget tonight are a lot worse than what we have already seen. So please, do your diligence and approve it tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on agenda items only? Seeing none in the audience, we're gonna move it over to Zoom. Madam Clerk? Do we see anyone on Zoom?
I don't see any hands raised.
We have a hundred and twenty-five participants, no hands raised. That is great. Like everybody wants to see the same thing. Right? Next up on the agenda, resolution of the Council of the City of Dearborn Heights, Michigan adopting and operating a budget for the fiscal year beginning July first, twenty twenty four, and ending on June thirtieth, twenty twenty five.
Council Chair.
Councilman Constant.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council adopt the resolution of Council of the City of Dearborn Heights, Michigan, adopting and operating budget for the fiscal year beginning July first, twenty twenty four, and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty five, and said tax levy shall be composed of the constituent rates for the purposes and with estimated yields described as follows, based on the aggregate of taxable values of one billion, seven hundred and sixty-four million, one hundred and thirty-five thousand, one hundred and seventy-five dollars for the City of Dearborn Heights, or as may be subsequently certified and amended net of tax increment capture. Further, consistent with City Charter Section four point nine eight, the compensation of each city employer or officer shall be within the limits of, and in accordance with the plan set forth in the Personnel Page of the budget applicable to the employer or officer, such that A, the compensation salary or wages of the employer or officer shall not exceed the amount stated for the employer or officer in the Personnel Page applicable to the employer or officer. B, the compensation salary or wages for each employee or officer whose position is exempt for purposes of paying overtime shall only be paid on a proportional basis during the fiscal year. And C, the compensation salary or wages for each employee or officer whose position is not exempt for purposes of paying overtime shall be paid in a proportional basis during the fiscal year, except as may be necessary to comply with any collective bargaining agreement or overtime law applicable to that employee or officer as outlined in eleven A.
Second. Motion made by Councilman Constant, seconded by Councilman Saab. Before we start on discussion, Councilman Saab did ask me if he can read a statement beforehand. So I'm gonna allow him to do that. Uh to the council members, Councilman, before you start, again, ask that we stay calm, stay collective, we stay respectful. Thank you, go ahead.
Good evening, everybody. Ten years ago, the City of Detroit made headlines as the largest city in America to file bankruptcy, highlighting the severe consequences of financial mismanagement. Nine years ago, Wayne County nearly followed suit, teetering the, teetering on the brink of becoming the largest county to file for bank uh bankruptcy. And in a stark contrast, three years ago, the City of Dearborn took a decisive action to dramatically, dramatically cut its budgets and still improving the quality of its services. Our city, Dearborn Heights, has faced significant challenges currently. We are closed on Fridays due to budget constraints. We have been operating at a deficit for several years. Compounding on uh these issues, our mayor has engaged in reckless spending, creating unnecessary positions that have strained our financial resources. Additionally, we have depended on the ARPA money uh to keep our funds afloat, but that money has run out. Furthermore, the mayor has been given bonuses and raises without the council's approval, and has failed to provide the requested documents to the, to justify these actions. The fear that is being spread around the city and to its uh, to the city residents and employees are absolutely false. We firmly believe that it's, that if a right, if the right, if the raises were given, and they should be given across the board, not to a select few. Thank you. That's good to meet you.
Thank you. Any other uh council members, any other discussions?
Council Chair.
Councilman Ahmad.
Thank you, Council Chair. I mean, I would say, am I a hundred percent happy with this budget? Definitely not. Am I going to work with this budget? I think we should. Uh but we have to work closely, and uh I do wanna maybe thank the administration that uh finally, after my resolution back in early April, April asking for the, all the information needed, was sent to us last evening and this morning. I don't know why I had to take that long for the resolution to go in effect. Uh but I do uh hope, Council Chair, that we can get to a, some kind of approval today for the sake of our city and our residents.
Thank you, Councilman. I will say just a few uh talking points here. Um and for the residents, I know there's been a lot of misinformation. Uh and you know, we're all here right now, we're in the public, media's here, everybody's either on Zoom. We have a full house in here, and I just wanna make it very clear. We have been working tirelessly, this entire body. Luckily, we have all worked alongside this administration, meeting after meeting after meeting. Seeing a video yesterday from the mayor saying he does not know what the council wants, we passed a resolution back in April, saying what we wanted. Um I will tell you that when the first meeting happened to take on this budget, the meeting had to been, had to be canceled, because the administration was not prepared. We had lost our comptroller, a new interim comptroller, there's not even a comptroller here today. Um and and thi- this was the initial of our first ever budget meeting. And nothing went right, we had to cancel the meeting, and we scheduled an emergency meeting so that we can follow uh, you know, the original meetings that we had. Uh so the timeline of what has been happening, we have met with the administration in here. Councilman Ahmad and myself have met with the administration privately to go through this budget. So for any rumor that this council and this body did not wanna see the city pass the budget, that is a complete lie. Just wanna set the record straight, that is not true. We want us, we wanna continue to support our police, we wanna continue to support our firefighters, we wanna continue to support our senior services. We wanna make sure that our city services are continuing to be able to pick up your waste management and anything else that the city is offering. We will never wanna see that our residents suffer. We pay the highest, some of the highest taxes, some of the highest water rates. We would never wanna put the city in jeopardy to say, we, you know, we love it, all these taxes, and we don't wanna pay you guys no more. That simply just, it's not true. I can tell you, I'm speaking on behalf of all seven of us over here, nobody wanted to not pass a budget. You cannot bring us the first budget, one point nine, one point nine million dollars in a deficit, that's what it was. We were gonna reach out to reserves, and we were gonna use reserve money to make a balanced budget. That's not giving a balanced budget. That is using your rainy day funds to make sure you have a balanced budget. A balanced budget is being fiscally responsible. That's my first thing. My second thing, Manny, if you don't mind, I know that you work in the comptroller's office. Can I just ask you a couple of questions on some things that I, that I found into this budget? Maybe Mariana, you can help him out as well. Well, he can speak, I mean, you might have some of the numbers, Manny, so if you don't mind, please stand next to her. Just on, and these could be just simple typos, with simple errors, but obviously, this budget is extremely important, and we wanna ensure that we're offering all the correct information. Um if you pull up the city clerk's office, I see here that we are budgeting one clerical three and one clerical one. Can you pull that off?
In the personnel pages?
Yes.
Okay. Do you want me to screen share the information with the?
I mean, that, that would be great, if, if I could pull that up. I don't know if those on Zoom can see it as well or not, but.
Council Chair.
Hang on, one second, Council.
Just a quick question.
Well, let's go, let me go through these real quick.
Plant Moran.
Is Plant Moran here?
No. Yeah.
I just wanna also keep in mind that we pay Plant Moran uh well over, over one point five million in the last three years to audit all of our books. Here, we're about to approve the budget, and nobody is here from Plant Moran again. So, since the media's here and we're airing out all of this dirty laundry, let's just put that out for the record as well. But I don't blame Plant Moran. I don't. I also don't play, blame Plant Moran on why the budget isn't passed as well. Let me know when you're ready. Hang on, one second, Gary.
Oh, yes, sorry, uh Gary does have a good point. When the motion was read, uh there was a number that was missed. It is one hundred and thirty-three.
Okay, Council, amend the motion, add that number that you missed?
Yes, yes.
Sorry, in the meantime. Yes, he read one hundred and thirty-five thousand, it's one hundred and thirty-three.
Okay. A second. Madam Clerk, can you um make sure that reflects, Councilman Saab, do you second that?
Yes.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, Gary, thank you, Mariana, Chief of Staff.
There we go.
Okay, thank you. We have the personnel page up for the city clerk's office.
Yes, we have the city clerk's office.
Great. I'm sorry, I don't know if I can see it from there, but.
Try this one.
That is all right. Um under the clerical, you have budgeted two positions. We have forty-five thousand, forty, I mean, sorry, proposed budget salary is forty-six thousand, three seventy-nine. When you add them up, we are still giving them the old salary pay. Forty-seven thousand, four eighteen for clerical threes, clerical ones, forty-five thousand, three fifty-eight. What it should be is forty-seven thousand, eight ninety-two, and forty-five thousand, eight eleven. So we are off, not by much, but a little bit, six, seven hundred dollars on each one. I tried calling Michelle today, but she didn't answer me. I didn't wanna do this here today, but.
It's okay.
I didn't hear from anybody.
We can fix that.
That's okay. We should be short, Councilman, if you don't mind.
So forty-seven thousand.
Forty-seven thousand, eight ninety-two for clerical three for the clerk's office, and forty-five thousand, eight eleven, versus what we have budgeted is forty-seven thousand, four eighteen, and clerical one is forty-five thousand, three fifty-eight.
So I do wanna point out that this may be a average of a clerical three and a clerk.
There's only two positions, and we're under budgeting this.
They're both clerical threes?
One is one and one is three.
So yeah, so this is the average of a one and a three.
I understand, but we're, we're, we're under budgeting it then.
Okay.
Even with the average, you say?
Even with the average, I mean, there's only two employees, you're not averaging twenty employees, you're averaging two.
We can fix that.
It's okay. So what's, what's that missing there? Can you give me that number? And the two that they have, and then subtract it from the two that they have.
Ninety-three thousand, seven hundred and three.
We're off by a thousand, seven, three.
Thousand, seventy-three, this budget is supposed to be thousand dollar surplus, we're now at even.
Okay.
Actually, we might even be off, because it was a thousand sixty-one according to the mayor, we're at a thousand seventy-three. We are now off by eleven dollars on the budget, this is just the first page.
Okay.
The second thing that we have, if you move over to the Treasurer's Office, there's a clerical position. Clerical two, we have them at forty-six thousand, eight twelve. It's supposed to be forty-six thousand, six forty-three.
So where are you reading these numbers? Cause it's not matching what I have.
If you look at the clerk.
In the personnel pages. Hmm.
If you look at your clerical position for clerical two, you're budgeting for four of them. You're budgeting for four of them at the old price, at forty-six thousand, one eighty-two.
Thirty-six thousand, five eighty-six.
Okay. Divide, well, you, I mean, there was a budget, the, you were, Ed, hang on, I'll show you how I came up with. One eighty-four, seven twenty-eight is what it should be. A clerical two isn't paid isn't paid thirty-six thousand, two twenty-four. Yeah.
Okay.
It's probably forty-six thousand, six forty-three.
Thirty-six thousand, four.
You have it at thirty-six thousand, two twenty-four.
Right.
Okay. We just, they all just got raises. Supposed to be forty-six thousand, six forty-three, times the four that you're budgeting for.
Basically, we're up probably by like ten thousand for each clerk.
Okay.
And I'm just, mind you, I'm just putting these numbers up, there's gonna be a budget passed.
Yeah.
But I want you to know, so now we're off by ten thousand there. Times four, and we're also off now by eleven dollars on the other, by the the eleven dollars on the clerk's office. So now, right now, we're down four thousand and eleven dollars, forty, forty thousand and eleven dollars right now. The second thing that we come up to is the comptroller's office.
Forty-one thousand, three hundred and one dollars.
Okay, keep tab of that. What was it, Councilman?
Forty-one thousand, three hundred and one dollars.
I also wanna state for the record, and I apologize that we're going through this process. Again, I tried reaching out to Michelle from Plant Moran Gap, I know she's traveling to Florida. She's gonna see her daughter at Disney World, and I'm sorry that we're in this position, but we're in this position.
It's okay.
And I, I actually just really started digging deep into this other part of the budget, because we were focusing our minds on the other things.
Okay.
So I finally just wanted to go through the entire stuff. Now that we're in the comptroller's office, there are two clerical threes. And.
One clerical three in the comptroller's department.
True. Comptroller's office, there are two clerical threes. Over budgeting for one clerical two and two clerical threes.
So yeah.
Your budget, you're budgeting for three of them.
Yes.
Yes, I know, and, and I know what position you're budgeting from. Two clerical threes.
No, one clerical three, two clerical twos.
Okay, that's all right. Well, we're still off.
Yeah, that's okay, just clarifying that.
So you have the original one at forty-seven thousand, four eighteen?
Forty-seven thousand, one sixty-one.
What's that?
Forty-seven thousand, one sixty-one.
Well, it's supposed to be forty, one of them is supposed to be forty-seven thousand, eight ninety-two, because that's the new clerical three pay. The old clerical pay was forty-seven thousand, four eighteen. And then if you have, which is not, this one isn't much, but if you have two clerical, two positions that you're budgeting for, we were budgeting forty-six thousand, one eighty-two. We should be budgeting forty-six thousand, six forty-three. Councilman, can you give me that number?
Sorry, just, you go, Saab, did you say we have two clerical three or one clerical?
One clerical three, two clerical two.
It looks like.
Yes.
There are two clerical threes. Yes. I, by the way, I just, I spoke with Mr. Turner before uh, before that.
Okay. So then, sorry. I apologize.
Okay, no big deal, no big deal. So you do have two clerical threes, and you have one clerical two.
We would, we would be off by fourteen hundred and sixty-two for the clerical three.
How much?
Uh fourteen, fourteen, I'm sorry, fourteen hundred and sixty-two.
Okay, and then give me.
For the clerk of two.
Forty-six, one eighty-two minus forty-six, six forty-three. Forty-six, one eighty-two minus forty-six, six forty-two.
Hundred and sixty.
What?
Sixty-one. Sixty-one, bro.
Yeah.
Fourteen, nineteen, twenty-three, over eleven.
One thousand, nine hundred and twenty-three? Okay. And when you add that up to the sum that we're off by?
Would be forty-one, forty-three thousand, two hundred and twenty-four.
You have the number, uh Chief of Staff?
Yeah.
Forty-three thousand dollars so far, that we are off budget. Then we come over here, which we can have a discussion on later with the Confidential Secretary, uh with the HR Department, and I wasn't here at the meeting, I wasn't feeling well, but when Council Chairman was running the meeting, I believe, some of the council members said they would like to see the Confidential Secretary's position put aside. Uh I will state also for the record, so that everybody is clear as to why we're saying this, when the Chief, when the HR Director, who I believe has just officially stepped down and is no longer with us, congratulations and thank her for her services. She said she did not need any, all those people inside the HR Department, she needed herself and one other individual. So we honored her with that. And now, there's a Confidential Secretary, I know the Council did not approve this position, uh but we can have that discussion later. Thank you. Well, let me, let me just finish this list, and then we can jump into that discussion, I'm gonna leave that for you guys. The next page that I have, and I think we're just about done here. If you open it up to the Recreation Center, we're also short about four hundred and forty-one dollars on the clerical three position. We have it still budgeted at forty-seven thousand, four eighteen, and it should be forty-seven thousand, eight ninety-two. There is one clerical uh. come from just the exact number. We can move on to the ordinance department. We have two clerical twos. Well, I'm gonna wait on Councilman Ahmad, who's being our accountant.
Actually, he said like, uh, off by a thousand forty-one fifteen.
Okay. Thank you, councilman. On the ordinance department, we have two clerical twos here. We're budgeting forty-six thousand one eighty-two. We should have been budgeting forty-six thousand six forty-three for two of them. So do forty-six thousand six forty-three times two. And then. I didn't, I didn't get all the information on the ordinance department, but I think I could be a little off. Uh, but I do know that the councilman, uh, went so past the resolution to have three ordinance officers and we're only budgeting for um, two. Currently, and I don't know exactly what that number is, but it would be, I'm assuming forty-seven thousand nine sixty-eight is what they would all be starting off at.
Okay.
You go there. This one from the fire department. Do we still have a clerical person in the fire department?
Yes.
We are budgeting one at forty-seven thousand eight ninety-two. Thank you, that one was correct.
Thank you.
Building and engineering. We have a clerical one in that department, correct?
Three clerical ones.
Three clerical ones. They should be budgeted for forty-five thousand eight eleven, not forty-five thousand three fifty-eight. They would also be shorting them as well. Yes, we are three short of, of this.
Eight eleven? Forty-five thousand eight eleven?
Building and maintenance. The custodian position, is this a new hire?
Um, I believe that position is vacant currently, but it is an existing position.
Correct. Would it be a new hire though?
Yes, once we go to the federal service.
We're budgeting them for a top-tier hire. Which is okay. I'm okay with that, but I mean, just the kind of balance of the numbers, you would actually, you have it budgeted for forty-seven thousand five eighty-nine. It should have been budgeted for forty-six thousand, uh, and some change. I don't, I don't remember the exact number off of my head. And then have DPW water. We have four clerical positions being budgeted. One of them is a clerical three. And they are budgeted, again, and, and, and guys, I just wanna make it very clear. I truly believe in my heart, this was an honest mistake by the administration, because we had just passed a budget, or we just passed, passed a, uh, a tentative agreement. And so the clerical positions here are not budgeted for what they should be getting paid. So we're actually mis-budgeting this. And I, I truly believe it was probably just an honest mistake. Uh, I know, you, we, you know, we had an interim comptroller, he had started the first week, we started budgeting. I don't wanna put any blame on anybody. He's, I'm, I'm gonna give, you know, the high, we're gonna take the high road on this and say, these are honest mistakes, but these are honest mistakes that I'm glad we've caught on to, because then we'd be giving the wrong information to the state of Michigan. Um, but if we come back to the clerical position, we have one clerical three, should be budgeted for forty-seven thousand eight ninety-two. Again, we are budgeting forty-seven thousand four eighteen for it, which we're under budgeting. And then there are, I believe, three clerical twos, is that correct? In the DPW water department. Thank you, Carrie. We are also budgeting for them forty-six thousand one eighty-two. We should be budgeting forty-six thousand six forty-three. We should be budgeting that times three now. We'll be off on them as well. And for myself, that's all that I have on the mistakes that I was able to, and I, again, I think these are honest mistakes. I don't think the mayor or, or Plant Marangap or anybody specifically out here came out and said, you know, let's not budget enough money.
Okay.
But I know that there are potentially some cuts that we're gonna have to make today in order to offer a, being fiscally responsible and a balanced budget, because currently, Councilman, if you can give me that number. And in a sixty, you know, in a sixty-one million dollar, uh, budget, I don't believe a hundred thousand dollars is a big deal. I think we can find this somewhere in this budget tonight. I think all the taxpayers will get the city services and all of our employees will be able to get back to work. Just for that final verdict of the number.
Uh, fifty-nine thousand five hundred and seventeen dollars.
Fifty-nine thousand. Where's my pen? We'll call it sixty thousand dollars is what we're shorting, which is truly not a bad thing. I think these were just simple errors that uh, were made. And again, we're gonna give everybody here the benefit of the doubt, right? We're not gonna be prideful and, uh, we're gonna move here. I know, Councilman Ahmad, you said you have something that you wanna speak on.
Yes, Councilor Chair.
Go ahead.
Chief of Staff, it brought, was brought to my attention, we have, if we look at the police department, we have fourteen command officers. Uh, I know we have like three lieutenants and twelve sergeants, and we budgeted for ninety-nine thousand four hundred and seventy-five for each one. Do they all get to pay the same amount?
No.
So.
There is different steps for.
No, no, I understand, but, uh, do they, I mean, since we have three lieutenants and twelve sergeants, I believe probably they get paid differently. So how come, how did we come up with that number?
It's the average.
Average.
Average for all the fourteen? Is, is it possible to know like each or maybe lieutenant, how much is the lieutenant, how much is the sergeant's or?
Um, yeah, we can look at their contract.
And, uh, it also says here, we, we have fifty patrol officers at the highest pay.
I spoke to Michelle about that as well. It's like she was gonna lower that number, but I didn't hear back.
Sorry, what's the second question?
It says that we're budgeting here for fifty officers at the highest pay.
At seventy-nine thousand.
Seventy-nine thousand six hundred and ninety-nine. Do we pay?
A-again, it depends on where they're on their career. They wouldn't necessarily be getting the full.
You're saying some people gets paid more and some people less? That's the average you're talking about?
Right.
So I know, you know, in the past, when we did the budget, you know, God's, God bless Elizabeth Porter Perry, she used to break down, you know, yours, you know, you know, here's your pro, you know, patrol officers for step one, step two, step three, step three, we're budgeting X amount of dollars, step two, we're budgeting X amount of dollars, step three, we're budgeting X amount of dollars. It does not say who the officers are, doesn't say anything, but we know that there's ten step ones, ten step twos, ten step threes, for example. And so we would budget for those ten X amount of dollars. But now what's happening is we're budgeting all for step three and we're putting everybody at the top. And so I don't also believe that that's being really, um, I think that's not giving us the right budget number here. I think this is inflating the number and overspending on this number, when in reality, it should not be that high, because I don't believe you have fifty patrol officers. That would be great, that would be amazing. Maybe at one point we did, but I know today, we don't have fifty patrol officers making eighty thousand dollars a year.
Okay. We can.
So do we wanna maybe say budget twenty-five of them and then budget twenty-five, uh, regular officers, starting pays? Or do you wanna do twenty, ten, twenty? For step one, step two, step three, cause I know step two gets paid a different more amount, and then step three is at the highest. And what we're doing is we took fifty, we budgeted the highest for them all, but we didn't do that for like all our clerical employees. We actually under budgeted them.
If you want, we could do it at the step two for today's purposes, just to make it faster, to do all fifty at step two.
Why, why don't we do twenty, ten, twenty? Why don't we do twenty for, for step one, twen-ten for step two and twenty for step three?
I don't, I'm not sure how many are on which level right now, so that's why I'm a little bit.
Then we, then we can budget all fifty for step two. We'll, 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 we'll give and take.
Okay.
So how much would that be?
I don't, I don't know. But she's gonna give us that number right now. Can you give it to us?
For everyone.
Yeah, what, what does step two get paid?
Sorry, one second.
Starting pay.
I'm gonna have to.
Councilor Chair, real quick.
Yes, sir, Councilman.
I mean, why can't we just have the actual number? It's always, I mean, it's kinda ridiculous kinda averaging it out and guessing ten and twenty and ten.
So, a-again, I just wanna make it very clear, this is not the council's budget, this is the mayor's budget. We are just skimming through on what things that we find.
Councilor Chair?
Yes, Councilman. Well, Mariani, you're looking that up, or if you can even give us the actual number. I mean, obviously, I want the budget, budget to pass. I mean, the state of Michigan just passed something called a skinny budget, where six hundred million dollars was not agreed on, but they passed the budget and setting aside six hundred million dollars, and they went on till almost four in the morning. So like, this happens day in and day out. They stayed until five in the morning in the state of Michigan. Uh, you know, Dearborn Heights, which is a lot smaller, smaller.
Not saying till five though.
Yeah, but I'm, I'm, I'm willing to stay here till midnight tonight to figure it out. Yes.
Councilor Chair, we're, we're budgeting for fifty-three officers. I truly don't believe we even have half of those officers. We're budgeting fifty, Councilor.
Well, you gotta remember.
Fifty, I'm sorry.
Fifty, but you gotta remember, if there's new hires, you gotta make sure that you're budgeting for those new hires.
I know, I understand that. At the highest pay.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, I agree.
That's what I'm saying. I mean, we are in deficit now. We're just trying to make it balance, I guess.
There is one more thing that I want to see. Again, I do apologize. I, I tried reaching out to Michelle, but she is heading on vacation. Then our deputy comptroller, uh, had a passing in the family. My heart goes out to him and his family, and I'm so sorry for your loss. And I believe our interim comptroller had his last day today, surprisingly.
So they have to be budgeted.
That's pretty good. So.
Okay. So I don't know how many we have on each step, but I did just do the average of all of our currently employed police officers, and it is forty-three. Um, so the average is seventy-eight thousand five hundred and fifty-eight.
Yeah.
I would recommend we use that number.
Sorry, can you see the number again, seventy-eight thousand?
Five hundred and fifty-eight.
So that drops it by, uh, almost, uh, thou-.
Councilor Chair?
Yes, sir.
Uh, do we have forty-three currently employed patrol officers?
Seventy-nine is what we had budgeted for, so seventy-eight is pretty close.
So we think fifty-three dollars pretty much.
Don't forget, this is a fluted document. Like, even if we kind of lowered it, and we have to come back on Tuesday in order to make sure that we're ready for the fiscal year, we can do that, and we can always amend the budget.
So Councilor Chair, basically, this is, we're taking off eleven hundred forty-one dollars per office, like, per position, times fifty, that gives us fifty-seven thousand and fifty dollars.
Nice, we're still down by three thousand. We'll find it.
Council, Councilor Chair?
Yes, sir, Councilman.
Chief of Staff, we, we have forty-three current employed patrol officers. That's what you just said, we have forty-three?
Forty-three.
And we're budgeting for seven additional.
They are labeled as patrol officers in our records. Yes.
Well, that's good to know. I thought the number was a little bit less than that.
Oh, that's, that's not true, because it includes resource officers.
What is it?
They're patrol officers.
Resource, school resource officers aren't considered patrol, right? Or they are?
I don't, I, I don't.
They are patrol officers, even though they're resource officers.
And they give, they give their life every single day, and we thank them, and everybody's equal in my heart, in my eyes.
Councilor Chair, I think the point, we're trying to get it as, you know, uh, officers on the street, you know, even though they do a great job at their schools, I mean, that's great, but we're just.
Yeah, I don't know if, I don't know, I, I, I mean, if we have forty-seven police officers, that is, that is amazing. Forty-three, that's great.
Patrol officers, yeah.
Must, you know, maybe we'll send an email, say, I wanted to see them more in our, in our streets, like, inside of the neighborhoods. That's great.
Councilor Chair.
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, Chief of Staff, says we have, we're budgeting here for two clerical positions. Do you know what level are they?
In the police department?
Yeah.
They would be considered two clerical threes. Let me memorize the number. So we're actually off on that.
Four clerical threes. Sorry, we just did a change. Uh, so there's four clerical threes that are in there for this upcoming.
But we're only budgeting for two.
We're only for, but there's two.
There're two.
It's okay, we'll just raise it a little bit.
Sorry, that is a recent change, so they did just move in there, that's why I just asked.
Okay, so we do, do forty-seven thousand eight ninety-three times four.
I'm sorry, so we have four now, not two?
Correct.
We have.
Okay, and how, how much is the, for clerical three, is the pay?
Forty-seven thousand eight ninety-two.
Actually, I did just get the.
No, it's, uh, forty-eight thousand three sixty-six.
How much?
Forty-eight thousand three sixty-six.
That's what it says in here, but I think it's forty-seven eight ninety-two.
Yeah, possibly forty-seven eight ninety-two.
I just wanna make sure I'm correct.
So I just pulled up the salaries for the TPOM pay scale. So a clerk three. Here are the years. I don't know what year they're in currently, in all honesty. Um.
If we just hired two, so that's year one, or the?
They've been with the union, so they moved from within, so that's why it's a little bit complicated.
Hold on, I think Carrie is not in your head, she might have misinformation.
They're all at the top.
They're all at the top level? So forty-seven thousand eight hundred and eighty-five point fifty-one.
Forty-seven, eight hundred and ninety-five?
Eight hundred eighty-five point fifty-one.
Okay, so we budgeted here for two at forty-eight three sixty-six. Okay, so now even.
Councilor Chair.
We're off, just with the clerk now, ninety-four thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars and forty, and four cents. If you add that to whatever before.
Ninety-four thousand?
Yes.
Cause you're adding two. Oh, cause.
Cause we added two, yeah. Okay, our budget now is out by hundred and fifty-four thousand three hundred and sixty-seven dollars and forty cents.
Councilor Chair, so, uh, let me, let me just get an understanding, the, I, I, I mean, I, I, again, I just wanna make it very clear. I don't like coming into the meeting and just, you know, barging in on certain questions, but we try to do this ahead of time. Um, maybe we are, did we budget these two positions? Who were they budgeted with before?
I think it was the pre, prior to clerical that we had in there, and again, there's.
Did we just, did we just miss these two, is what you're saying?
It's a new, it's a new movement, so I think when we started the budget process, they weren't in the police department, they are now.
I know, but they were budgeted somewhere else at one point.
Correct.
Where were they budgeted at?
Councilor Chair, they were budgeted.
Comptroller and HR department.
That says the budget for twenty-three, twenty-four for, for clerical.
Yeah, but.
They were in your last year's budget, then they took them out.
Yeah, okay.
And now they're putting them back in, for some reason.
Okay.
So this is a lateral move from a different department.
Yeah.
Okay, so why are we done hiring new positions to HR and the comptroller? Moving these around the city?
Because that's one of their rights and the union contract, they get to move, uh, within the departments as positions open up.
Okay, so, so.
But, but, Councilor Chair, I'm sorry, but do you know where we? How many union positions were removed to hire uh, the civilian positions that, that were union prior?
I believe we're done. I believe we're done three union positions.
Were these two positions union also?
I don't believe we removed.
Yeah.
So, the comptroller.
I'm sorry, I'm gonna have to have to ask you to come up to the mic.
Sorry, these were civil service representatives, so I'm just looking at her, cause I know she knows.
It's okay, it's, we're just, we would just wanna get the right numbers.
Okay, it was my understanding that one of the union positions in comptroller, as well as the former union position in H R were moved to the police records positions to create the two new ones. So they're just, current union positions just moved from two different departments to police.
So did we lose, eh, on the record, you're saying we lost no union position? I thought, I, because what I was told was from an anonymous union employee, who really called me anonymously, and I don't know who I spoke to. Told me that they lost up to three union positions.
I'm not aware of any that we've lost, there are some that are vacant.
Okay, are we still budgeting for them?
That need to be filled, as far as I know, yeah.
I know the confidential secretary used to be, when, I think her was Mariana, I I don't wanna.
Yes.
Yeah, I don't wanna say Mariana when it was.
Don't say names.
No.
Yeah, that used to be a union position, and now we're taking it to a confidential secretary, so we are, that's one right there that we're.
But that's one of the positions that was moved to police.
No.
Well, no, H R used to have a position there that was union.
Correct.
She retired. We are now taking a confidential secretary, and we're saying, you're gonna come in, but you're not gonna be a union employee anymore, so now you technically are eliminating a union position.
It's not in that department, it's my understanding through the contract process, they moved it to a different location, so the union still has that numbered spot, it's just in a different location.
Okay.
So it's just a create new false position, is what it is.
No.
It 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 didn't exist before.
What, what didn't?
The co- and and.
I mean, there was, there was always a secretary there, I think they just labeled it a new name.
No.
No.
No?
There were just, yeah, there were just two people.
Well, no, I'm saying before, you know, when Elizabeth was there, she did have a secretary, what was her name?
Don't say names, please, but there was a confidential secretary, or sorry, there was a secretary that was a clerical.
Three.
One position in the H R department, she was a clerical one position that was in the H R department, um. It was requested that that position become a confidential secretary, the position was moved to the police department as a clerical three position. So the union continues to have the same amount of clerical staff within the union. But we did request an additional confidential secretary for the H R department.
You guys did that, you guys did that in the, in the, uh, negotiations with the union.
So it wasn't that we removed from the union, we just created an additional non-union position.
Wish you would've made it, that's all.
It's.
Any other questions from our, uh, council members?
Yes.
Go ahead, councilman. Before you start, how much are we, uh?
Well, well, so we were short hundred and fifty-four thousand, three hundred and sixty-seven dollars and forty cents. Uh, but we shaved fifty-seven thousand from, uh, from the patrol officers' positions. So, so we're down ninety-seven thousand, three hundred and seventeen dollars and forty cents.
How much was that, please?
Ninety-seven thousand, three hundred and seventeen dollars and forty cents.
Okay. One last question here, under three lieutenants and twelve sergeants. Um, obviously, we're over budgeting like we did with the patrol officers. Um, why don't we budget this accurately?
Where, sorry?
For the.
The command officers.
Command officers at fourteen positions, three, you don't, you're paying them all at lieutenant pricing. We know we only have three of those.
Um, in the fire or in the police department?
Right there.
You're speaking of the command officers?
Correct.
Okay.
It's fourteen? You have, I mean, that one should have never been averaged, that one should have been really broken down.
None of them should.
None of them should have.
I know, I mean, I'm, you know, again, this is not our budget.
Well, yes, it is.
I'm saying, eh, this is the proposed budget from the mayor, is what I'm saying, we are now correcting, making the corrections.
I'm sorry, Mariana, you're doing a great job, I'm like three and one right now.
You're doing a great job. Do you know what the, 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 the pay is for a lieutenant, what the pay is for a sergeant, or if maybe we have our police chief, or?
It's about a hundred and two thousand, fifty-nine and eighty-eight cents.
What is that?
A hundred and two thousand, fifty-nine and eighty-eight cents for lieutenants.
Lieutenant. What are sergeants, starting pay?
I don't know about the starting pay, I'm sorry, I need to get the pay schedule for police, but, um, we're budgeting them currently at ninety-six thousand, three hundred and ninety and six cents.
I'm sorry, ninety-six?
Ninety-six thousand, three hundred and ninety and six cents.
Council Chair.
Yeah.
Just to go back to patrol officers. Yes.
Get up the mic, lady, your voice is kind of soft.
I don't like my, your mics, but, uh, uh, patrol officers, there's actually thirty-nine current patrol officers. So council, uh, both of them, please adjust that back to.
Well, I mean, there's, there's thirty-nine, we still wanna budget in case.
No, no, but but, uh, right.
Yeah. We'll pull them out now and just balance it and come back later and add them when we got, when we need.
By the way, for full disclosure, Councilman Ahmad has got a master's in engineering, he's a math whiz, and he's very, very, very good-looking number.
I'm gonna mess up, no. Just on Tuesdays.
Top, top of his class, by the way, as well. Valid Victorian of his class in college, unheard of, and he's here serving the city of Dearborn Heights.
On a Friday.
I might off from the comptroller position, you should have played for it. Good laughs, good vibes, let's all enjoy each other, enjoy each other's company. You know, breaking records, a hundred and sixty people on Zoom, I don't think it's ever happened. Clearly, made headline news everywhere, Channel Seven, Channel Four, thank you guys for being here. Yeah. Nothing from the audience, please, pal.
Also, Council Chair, while we're still waiting, also, the police department. Why did we, um, uh, why did they budget the emergency manager with the police, that's a department of its own? It's already budgeted in the budget, because it's own.
Oh, yeah, that's great. Uh, there's seventy-five thousand, that's two.
Just to clarify that, no, uh, the emergency management doesn't have its own fund, it has typically been charged to the police department historically. Um, that is where it belongs, um, so that is.
It's got its own page.
It's got its own personnel page and its own, um, new salary, but there's no salary s- line item in it, like, there's no fund in our payroll payroll system for it, so they've always been charged to the police department.
We're under budget. We're under budget.
Under budget, yeah, it's okay, we'll just bump it up, figure it out. Thank you, Chief Staff, you're doing a great job. Mayor, you did a good job with the great hire here. We're done.
We, we under budgeted for the command officer by seventy thousand, two hundred and seventeen thousand, thirty-six cents. With that new number that you gave me, Madame Chief of Staff. So we budgeted one million, three hundred ninety-two thousand, six hundred and forty-three dollars, where we were supposed to budget one million, four sixty-two, eight sixty and thirty-six cents, with the new numbers that you just gave me. With the salary of one oh two for the lieutenants and ninety-six for the sergeants.
I thought we were gonna lower that, looks like we gotta raise it. What's that number?
Seventy thousand, two hundred seventeen dollars and thirty-six cents.
We wanna make sure that we pay our officers, because we love our officers.
So that takes us to. We're off by hundred and sixty-seven thousand, five hundred thirty-four dollars and seventy-six cents at the moment.
I write that number down for me, you circle it.
Council Chair.
Councilman.
Um, are we still making comments on the motion?
Yeah, 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 absolutely. I'm just waiting on Mariana, but if you want.
Yeah, I mean, is, is she looking up stuff that way for the?
Well, no, I think she's just writing the number down, eh, Mariana?
I have some comments.
Yeah, but.
Yep, 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 but I'll start off with Councilman Wensel. We'll make our way over to Councilman, uh, we'll go to Councilwoman first, ladies first.
Ladies first.
Then we'll go to, uh, Councilman Constant. Ladies first?
Yes.
Go ahead, Councilwoman Breyer.
Okay, this may be out of line, but have we received any money for our grants at this point? Absolutely, man.
No.
Nothing?
No, but we've removed everything that we've not, so there was a million dollars for the fire department, we asked it to be removed.
I I thought we removed most of it, but I thought we saw a couple left, didn't we?
Yeah. I mean, if, I mean, I don't know if I missed any, but, um, I, you know, speaking with the mayor and Michelle and the chief of staff, we removed the one for a million dollars, I believe, correct?
Correct, and just as a reminder, uh, the money comes in after we've expended, so when we send the reports of what we've spent, then they reimburse us for that money, typically with most grants.
That's for the nine eighty, but million would not, you know, moved for the, we removed that.
The fire one, yes, we removed that, it's still in the works, no.
Okay. Councilman, uh.
We were almost two point nine.
Well, no, because that million was a wash, she put it in, and so Michelle, according to what she explained to me, was, the million was charged here, paid here, so she used and paid.
Spent.
Yep. Uh, Councilman Wensel.
Thank you. Um, there's still a lot of things in this budget that I'm, I'm not happy with, you know, the six hundred thousand dollars in our, our highway, our roads, I know we're getting two hundred fifty thousand back from F fifty-one, but I'm sure they asked for extra. They didn't get extra, they got cut, and I'm sure every department's the same way, they asked for stuff and got cut. But, um, that being said, you know, it's, it's a shame that we got to this point. You know, with all the negative publicity on T V and social media, you know, it's been, uh, directed to our city. It's making our city look bad, but, you know, it's not our city um, or the residents that are looking bad, uh, we have a great city with great residents. Uh, the problem is our leadership, including myself, who are at fault on this, you know. We should have taken control and used our authority months ago and got this budget passed, adopted. But we were, you know, we're hoping to work with the administration and, uh, everybody in the city to get it passed a long time ago, but un- unfortunately, that didn't happen. And no matter what happens tonight, and I've talked to people from these three departments, fire, police, and D P W. And they, they assured me that they took these jobs to serve the city. And regardless of what happens, they will be on the job tomorrow, serving the city. Even if they try to get locked out, they will be here to serve the city. Um, I, I know, I wanted to eliminate the H R confidential secretary, did we figure that in these numbers here?
No, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Cause we still have to make sure that we're budgeting for the three.
Right.
For the point, we're only budgeting for one additional person.
That was my next thing, you know, eliminate the confidential secretary in H R, however, adding an ordinance officer that we had in there that was mysteriously taken out.
Two of them were.
One, two of them were, no, they, they budgeted for two, we wanted three.
Correct.
They budgeted for two.
Correct, I'm sorry, I thought they removed the two.
No, they, I, I believe the final budget was t- was two in there, we, uh, however, also we adopt, we passed, um, a year ago, probably, a, um, a raise uh, for our C D B G department. And this was, this was voted on by city council and approved.
The mayor said he was gonna look into it.
Well, that's, that's fine, but I mean, you can put it on tonight. The C D B department, C D B G, is, is not funded by taxpayer money, in a sense, it's funded through HUD. So none of us city of Dearborn Heights taxpayers actually pay the salaries.
Hang on, Councilman, it is funded by taxpayers' money, it's not coming from our general ledger of, of our, the, what we've levied from taxpayers. See, what you're paying it is to the federal government, which is technically.
Yeah, that's what I said, technically, that's what I said, you know, yeah.
So taxpayers in Dearborn Heights are paying, uh, you know, towards.
Well, everybody's paying, not just us, it's around the, from the whole country's paying into the HUD thing. I think it's, whatever, however, but it's paid out of HUD, it's not out of our budget at all. It's HUD, HUD's paying, giving money to the city of Dearborn Heights to run the C D B department. And we, you know, we raised the director's pay to ninety-five thousand, and to this date, he, he hasn't gotten a penny.
And the, and the employees.
Yeah, and the, the employees, we had, uh, we had our, our grant coordinator at thirty-eight dollars an hour, raised to thirty-eight dollars an hour. And our, um, project coordinator to thirty-five dollars an hour. And our program coordinator to twenty-five dollars an hour, and none of these four have gotten a penny in this raise. And probably legally, they're, they're owed retroactive pay.
We've asked for a retro pay.
And, but I know we've asked for it, but we, what, how much have we got?
Nothing.
Zero. And that's been a year, probably, or something, I'm pretty close to it. And that, that's, that's, I mean, that's something that we voted on, we made a motion, it was seconded, we discussed it, we voted on it, it passed, and this, this ignored. And like a lot of other things, we voted on and passed, were ignored. And, uh, I'm just, you know, this, this type of thing, this budget here, there's so many things in there, averaging, you know, you got twenty, twenty people and you're averaging their pay. You know, I was, we wanna see what each person make, you know, on a budget, this is our budget, you know, we, how can we go back and say, oh, you owe this guy or this girl you know, eighty-five thousand, you know, be a budgeter for, for, for seven, eh, eighty-seven thousand or something, you know, I mean, just having these averages, that's not being transparent. And, uh, you know, to, and not, to adopt a budget in this, and like this, I'm, I don't know, it's gonna be tough.
Well, I think overall, we need to adopt the budget, and I think what we need to do as a council, maybe host a study session, call Platte Moran back here, and say, hey, we found some things, this is not enough, this is not good, you know, look, Councilman, you're entitled to this. Platte Moran Gap does not work for the administration, they work for the city of Dearborn Heights. You, the taxpayers is actually who they pay for, work for.
Council Chair, I, I asked the representative from Platte Moran a month ago to give us some figures, haven't got a, not one figure yet.
You know, look, they.
They're not working for me.
I mean, then, we can eliminate Platte Moran Gap tonight.
Well, I don't want, I don't, I, I didn't say that, don't get, don't get me wrong, I didn't say that, don't, don't, no, I mean, I'm just saying. They, they, they're not working for me, I, I asked them specifically to do something, and it wasn't done. You know, I don't know who, who directed them to do, to not do it, I don't know.
Thank you, Councilman Constant.
Thank you, Council Chair, I wanna thank our colleagues, uh, the administration, uh, the chief of staff, Mariana, the mayor, our, uh, interim comptroller, uh, Don Turner, and everyone for working on this budget. Going forward, the city has to pass a balanced budget by law, I think what, uh, uh, will be helpful is full disclosure. All the information, what everyone's getting paid, open, honest, adult discussion, and compromise, and coming to an agreement sooner than later. That's it.
Thank you.
Council, Council Chair.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Ma- Madame Chief of Staff, do we know, do we have fourteen people in a command officers' unit, like, are they all hired, like, is it full, fully hired, fourteen people?
I think we might be budgeting in case somebody gets promoted or whatnot.
Well, they requested twenty-two, and they, we only budgeted for fourteen, so.
Hmm, Council Chair, also, I have a, I have a question, I know this is, uh.
Well, that, Councilman, uh, Councilman Ahmad's question be asked first.
Sorry, how many lieutenants and command officers, um?
It says twenty-two, you budgeted fourteen.
Uh, the request was for twenty-two, constantly.
Maybe more people, they assumed were gonna get promoted, but I don't know, maybe there's not positions available. Funding? I know we also asked for a question, just for like a typical number, how much we paid in attorney fees from Plant Moran Gap, we never received that either.
Attorney fees for Plant Moran Gap?
No, 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 how much money, I asked time around gap to add, to give us that figure of how much we paid just in attorney fees in this, in the last year.
Oh, that's, that should be in your corporation council, uh.
No, no, not our corporation, because we didn't.
It's in their budget, so under contractual services, under the corporation council's budget.
But no, because our labor attorney is not put under his budget. It's put in a separate, different part of the budget, I just had to find it, and now I added those two together. But they're not, he's, the labor attorney is not under, um, his budget.
It may be under HR, I can check.
But, but it's okay, I mean, the, the moral of the story is, we, we won't ask Plant Moran Gap a few questions. Counselors just haven't gotten everything yet.
Okay, so I see twelve sergeants. That are currently employed.
And how many, and how many lieutenants?
Three.
And three lieutenants.
So, so we need to budget for fifteen then? Oh. We're, we're off again.
A- again, I would be cautious with that because there are promotional processes.
Well, no, you're under, you're under budgeted.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, you guys are off by seventy-nine thousand.
No, no, this is more, we have one more within budget for Council Chair, so there'll be seventy to sixteen, six. Let's add one more of, uh.
You only have, uh, Chief of Staff, you only have budgeted for fourteen employees between the, uh, lieutenants, which are three sergeants. Which you're telling us now are.
Twelve.
Twelve, that's fifteen, so you guys under budgeted this one.
So you're under budgeted by hundred and seventy-two thousand, two seventy-seven and twenty-four cents. And this is just, uh, this is gonna.
How much is our total number?
That would be a hundred and sixty-seven point four, seventy-six cents plus. We're down by two hundred and sixty-nine thousand, five hundred ninety-four dollars and sixty-four cents.
All right, could we take maybe a fifteen minute break to get all of these numbers together, and I can double check with Mr. Ahmad where we are, and then get back to.
Well, why, why don't we get through some, I think, let me hear from one of some of the council members. I, I don't want you to feel overwhelmed at all, I'm sorry if you are, you're doing a great job, but I want you to know that. Tonight, we're budget, we're, we're gonna pass a, a, a balanced budget, we're gonna be fiscally responsible, all of us collectively. Um, like, what I wanna do before we take on that, is first hear from any of our council members.
Council Chair.
Go ahead, Councilman.
So, for dispatch, I know we have a huge shortage for dispatch, on the weekends usually officers answering calls. Why did we go from thirteen to budget for eight?
I mean, you gotta keep in mind, uh, Councilman, that. The administration is probably making these decisions.
But these are, decisions are important to safety, the public, uh, safety at risk.
I don't know, Mayor, do you have anything on that? Honestly, I, I don't even know how to answer it.
Okay, so, yeah, it does say here that eight budgeted, so that was, that was turned in by the police department, that we budgeted for eight, uh, dispatches.
How many do we currently have?
Uh, gotta check the, you checked, uh, Chief of Staff? I don't have the list of personnel.
Eight in my record.
We have eight.
Okay, so we're budgeting eight, that's all we need, we don't need to budget for fourteen or thirteen.
We're always short.
Councilman, right now, we're budgeted, uh, we're under budget right now, so.
That's, that's fine, but again, public safety.
I, I agree, you know, we can.
No, but a public safety.
We, we can find ways to go through the budget, that's what I said, we're gonna do.
I got another question for the Chief of Staff, how many FOIA coordinators does the city have?
Two.
Why do we need two?
One is in charge of, actually, well, two, because one is in charge of all police FOIAs, one is, uh, general, and we also have. An individual in the police department that also assists with the fire, sorry, fire department that assists with the fire FOIAs. Because of HIPAA violations and things like that.
When was this position created?
The FOIA coordinator was created last fiscal year, I don't recall the exact date.
Was this posi- position just made up, or did it exist before?
The position was currently done by a lieutenant, and it is not necessary to have a certified police. Uh, person do a clerical job that a civilian can do. So we decided when that person retired to offer a lower pay to a civilian that can provide the same services.
Was this person hired from within, or?
No, it went through the civil service process.
Council Chair.
Council Chair, I'd like this position to be one.
The union or non-union job?
Non-union.
It's n- a non-union job.
No, a non-union job.
How about the logistics coordinator, uh, Chief of Staff?
The non-union job.
Was, did that exist before?
No.
And when was this position created?
Last year.
The council approved this position, or either position?
No.
Okay, I'd like to see this position removed from the budget also, please, Council Chair. Mayor, please.
Uh, when, when you're ready.
He said, when you, when you're done, it's okay, maybe collect it and come.
Also, Chief of Staff, I go back to the emergency manager, I see here it says seventy-five thousand in the police personnel page. When you go under the emergency manager, there's no number for it.
With a long tongue.
Right, but you're saying it's coming from the same. A general, a ge- ledger, but it's not. And is it, and it is its own department.
What we can do is, Councilman, is we can ensure that it's moved out of the police department and put in its own, there you go, that resolves that one. Manny, if you don't mind.
That's a little complicated for today, if you want, we can amend it tomorrow, because that would require us to create a new general ledger number. Um, that again, I would recommend that we do that the following week.
That's fine, that's fine. So just know that we're gonna amend the budget to do that.
To do what? Sure.
Uh, make sure that the.
And then Chief of Staff, I'm sorry, going back to the same page before we take a break, the crime analysis, was that a new position or is it an existing position?
A new position.
Okay, and nobody ever did that before in the department?
No, but it's good to have it.
No, no, exactly, it comes in front of council for approval, or was council made aware of it?
No.
Then also the mechanic.
Mechanic came before the council.
Was that our, that's a union position, correct?
Yes.
And it did come before the council. The council approved it.
And all four are clerical positions, those are existing or?
We, we're adding two additional.
But are these are within the city, within, okay, by the rule.
Good chair.
Yep, Councilman Wensel, hang on, I'm sorry.
I'm the mechanic, hang on, one, he might have come from DPW, I think.
Yeah, yeah, he is, tell, tell Councilman Sabs and then I'll get to you, or.
No, I'm good, that's all I wanted to mention.
Then a few.
So, the police department has two custodians, right?
Yeah.
Does the.
Actually, I'm sorry, the emergency manager had already been created a new general ledger account, so they should be removed from the personnel pages of the police department.
Okay, so that's minus seventy-five thousand.
It's already been minus, too.
Yeah, it's already been minus. She, I believe, uh, you asked for that early on, she did.
They're still showing.
I know.
Okay. Um. I'm sorry, Councilman.
Hang on, one second, I'm sorry.
Just to make sure.
I, I just, one second.
Custodian positions, we have two for the police department, is this one, who wants for the courthouse, or is the courthouse has its own?
Oh, courthouse would be. I don't think from the audience.
Okay, do you have any other questions?
I'm sorry, I think I missed the third position that Mr. Sob requested, Councilman Sob, can you repeat logistics coordinator, FOIA coordinator, what was the third?
Analysis, crime analysis.
Council Chair.
Yes.
If I may, sorry, um, as the individual council members are making requests, uh. We typically need the council as a whole to vote in order to implement those changes.
Correct, correct, but we're just writing things down right now.
Okay, perfect, I was like, do you want me to?
Uh, just write down with those numbers, if we were to eliminate those three positions.
Are they all, all these?
Well, don't add them up, just write it down, the number, and then we can go through it right before we make a decision and a discussion amongst the council.
Council Chair.
Hang on, one second, Councilman, actually, go ahead.
I do not see custodians for the court.
Okay, so we'll leave the two, we don't wanna leave the.
But is, is one getting funded through the court or no? Cause I know they split costs.
I'm not sure, but those two custodian positions would be considered union positions, and I would hate to eliminate as.
I'm not, I'm not eliminating no position.
Okay.
Just making sure it's not split.
Also, other than the, Councilman, other than the custodian, do you have anything else, cause?
For the police department, that's it.
Okay, you have anything else on you?
The confidential secretary for HR.
Yeah, we said we're gonna discuss that, anything else?
The mayor's office, the voter secret, uh, clerk, like the.
What is it?
The clerk, the voter secretary. I don't know if it's a full-time or part-time position.
That wasn't budgeted, just to clarify.
It was not budgeted.
So how many secretaries are in the office, for the mayor's office?
There's one full-time and one part-time.
Stephanie and Mrs. Malas, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Right now, we're, actually, there's two part-timers at the moment, we're transitioning one to another, sorry.
What does that mean?
Where are they at? I don't see them in the budget, they're not in the budget, no.
It's part-time under the mayor's department.
Mayor's office?
You still got a budget for a part-time position?
Yeah, there's, there's no part-times.
Yeah, there's no.
The personnel budgets do not show part-timers for any of the department.
Not sure what part-time, we show, we budgeted for part-time.
We budgeted for them in the budget, they're not in the personnel pages. Only full-time employees are in the personnel pages.
That is true, that is true. I mean, I, I wish you would have put that in there as well, so then the mayor's budget could potentially be off by two forty thousand dollars each.
No, because with part-timers, we control their time and we always make sure that they don't go above what the part-time allotted amount is.
What's, what's the part-time date?
What's the part-time with?
What's the part-time that they stay? Isn't there a term limit for a part-time employee?
Six months.
Six months for union positions, but there are exemptions for, um, three positions that can be there. Forever, part-time, so there's three positions in the unit that are exempt from the six-month rule.
These aren't union positions.
Um, these are not union positions, no, part-timers are not union positions.
Correct, so what's the union got to do with that position?
Uh, again, it's the rule of the six months that only three of them don't have to be in the six-month rule, so it is exempt from that. Because the union requested that we don't hire too many part-timers on a six, um, more than six-month basis. Because that takes the position of a full-time employee.
So you're saying that the two part-timers that are working for the mayor will only be here for six months?
No.
So how can they be part-timers?
There's three exempt positions that are full-time, part-time positions, one of them used to be in the HR department back in the day as well. I don't know if you remember, she was a young student that was here, she's still here, there's another one that stepped in.
Part-time at the HR, moved them to the mayor's office, part-time at the mayor's office.
Again, there's three of them, so there's one in HR, there's some.
Then you just circulate them around, right?
Not typically, we try to keep them as long as they wanna stay, but again, part-time positions eventually move on to other things.
Okay, great.
Council Chair.
Yes.
We did budget for the part-time in the mayor's, so budgeted for twenty-four thousand seven hundred and twenty.
That's good.
Right, so do we exceed that, where, do we exceed the twenty-four thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars a year?
Not in this final one.
No.
You have the numbers for.
Yeah, not in the final, the one we got to a day.
Not in the personnel sheet.
Can you give me the current budget too, where the part-time position?
Thousand seven hundred and twenty.
For twenty-twenty, uh, for this year's budget?
Yeah. I'm gonna go on to the mayor, cause I know he was patiently waiting, go ahead, Mayor.
Okay, so, um, I don't know if you guys remember, I don't know which hearing it was, uh, Council Chair, but, um. The cops office, you know, the Department of Justice, you know, when, when they came here, uh. When Chief Hart, you know, she, when he came to the city, um, he actually requested for them to be here. So they made an assessment of the entire police department, and actually, they're here next week, so they're here.
Nice.
Continuously, just trying to help her.
By the way, they've never come here though, I've never met them.
No, well, I mean, they've had, they've opened it up for council members to be with.
Nobody's ever told me.
Well.
Yeah, sure.
Well, if, if you wanna meet him on Monday today.
Send me an email, I'd love it, hang on, meet you, lunch on you.
Okay, I'll, I'll buy you lunch.
I like that, thank you. Who sent me in the mail, couldn't get along.
Um. Uh, so, one of the things, they made some recommendations, and that's the recommendations we followed. You know, what the, the DOJ, the cops office, and you know, they're the highest in, in the US that actually makes recommendations. So, they, they actually volunteered to come to Dearborn Heights, you know, because of, you know, the, we requested that. And just, just to let the public know, usually when the DOJ or the cops office, they come into a city. Um, it's usually not a good thing if they come on their own, which is, it can sense the fee, which is a lot of money to the.
I'm gonna stop you right there, Mayor, cause I don't wanna instill any more fear, cause we've already.
No, 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 I know, I'm just explaining, I'm explaining, because a lot of people.
We're saying they come in here out of fear, you just said you're hard brought on.
Council Chair, may, you know, I'm just saying, they're, they're.
We're gonna instill any more fear, I'm gonna say.
No, 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 I'm not, I'm just telling you that they're actually transitioned, there's a lot of things that they're doing at the police department, they're.
That's good.
They're offering training, you know, they're paying for some training.
Good, that's great, that's.
So one of the things that they offered, Councilman, Council Chair, please.
Yes.
Okay, so they made some recommendations, there were some officers that were doing actual work that they should be on the street, right? So some of the positions that you guys talked about, it was done by somebody in the department, so. Now they're on the road, they're actually doing actual police work, so some of the positions that they were doing before. Now we have to bring civilians, you know, not, you know, M-Call certified to do those positions.
Now, can I stop you for a second, Mayor, and I respect that, and I, 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 uh. My, I salute to the DOJ and thank you for the services, I look forward to the email and hanging out with them on Monday. Um, but what I will tell you is, you never brought it before council, ever. Council had no idea these positions were brought up, the DOJ made the recommendation, you guys said, put them there, pay them. And, and to me, we didn't go through an amendment budget on this, this is the same thing that has happened with the, you know, that, that feels like in the police department, no other department. That we are constantly just hiring people in there and never consulting the legislative body, which has been come, obviously, we can't speak on, on the stipulation that's taken place. But we are currently in litigation because of this, we are in federal court because things like this continue to happen. I'm, I'm all for hearing the DOJ, but the DOJ is not. They can make the recommendation with you and the, and the police chief, but the council is who spends the money, not the police chief and the mayor.
Council Chair.
Thank you.
Those positions were still, they were existing positions, they were done by, exactly, so. Yeah, so the police officers on the road, so we have not exceeded the budget for the police, so the same people.
Are you saying the police officer used to make his salary of fifty thousand, plus make another fifty thousand for being the crime analysis?
No.
I don't, I don't think that's the case, so the, so the, these positions were never budgeted for in the past. Cause according to this budget, it does not show that they were budgeted the year before.
They were budgeted through a police officer, like say the example that, uh, the Chief of Staff mentioned. A lieutenant was actually doing FOIAs.
Yeah, but the lieutenant position was only budgeted for, and maybe for overtime, it was never budgeted. Hey, you're gonna be, you're gonna make eighty thousand as a lieutenant, I'm giving, you know, just examples. I don't know what a lieutenant makes, and I hope that they make a lot more, and I, I salute our police officers, but if they make eighty thousand here. We never said you're a crime analysis or a FOIA coordinator, you're gonna make an additional fifty-five thousand, which adds up to a hundred and forty thousand or a hundred and forty-five thousand. That was never the case, the case was, they are doing two jobs for the price of one, now we're doing. Which is great, you know, have these positions, Mayor, and I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with you, all I'm saying is, bring it before the council. Be transparent to this council and say, hey, great, guys, I would like to hire these three people in the police department, like you guys usually do, but it feels like. You know, when, when, when the fire department goes to hire somebody, it comes before the council. Today, three positions, which we had no idea about, are now being budgeted, and they say, well, they started last year, yeah, great, we passed the budget last year, they weren't there. Then you guys fired them, where did they get the money from, I don't know, how are they getting paid, I don't know, council never approved it. It was, Madam Clerk, can you tell me if there was ever anything on here that we approved for, was there any other resolution from the police department for these positions?
Not that I recall.
So, I mean, to me, it's disappointing, I, I, I wanna give you these positions. But we have to do with the right proper policy and procedure, can't just say, you know, I'm gonna, you know, I'm gonna create this new position and I'm gonna bring this person in here from Westland. Cause that's a lot of, that's another rumor that came in, some of these positions are coming in from Westland, and we're hiring all these people from Westland, nothing gets Westland, hire from Dearborn Heights. Hire our own union positions to do it.
Council Chair. Council chair.
Go ahead, councilman.
So again, it's it's, we we have a charter that we follow. At least this body follows. The mayor keeps violating this char- um the charter. Mayor's violated Act seventy eight, section five.
This is not about the budget.
But 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 it is about the budget, because these sections clearly are the budget. And it says it has to come in front of council for approval. I don't care if the DOJ or what president made the recommendation. This is taxpayer money. And the charter says that.
I just said that.
Council chair.
Yep, mayor.
Again, okay, so I I don't have the the lieutenant's pay, so let's say, for example, using this one here, it has an average of ninety nine thousand dollars you're paying a lieutenant. Okay, so now you got a foyer coordinator, you're paying that foyer coordinator sixty six thousand. The person, the lieutenant that was here, he was not do, all that person was doing is foias, that's all, just foias. Was not doing his police, you know, he was not doing what a lieutenant. Like say supervised, he was doing, he was doing foias. That's all that lieutenant was doing. So when the lieutenant left, left a gap.
Guys, nothing from the audience, please.
So council chair, we brought, we brought a, it it was posted, and it did go to the civil service process.
But it didn't come to the council.
But it was already budgeted for the foyer coordinator, but it it was a foyer coordinator before, if you look.
No, it was lieutenant you said.
Yeah, but it's still a foyer coordinator.
No, it was lieutenant.
Yeah, but the lieutenant, that's all he was doing is foyer.
I understand that, but he was being budgeted as a lieutenant. He was never being budgeted as a foyer coordinator.
Council chair.
Hang on, councilman. So, I'm I'm all for giving you these three positions. I will support them here, right on the news, telling you, I will give them all to you. Just do it the right way. Come before the council, submit the resolution, and say, guys, I wanna hire these three people, we have the budget for it. I will one hundred percent support you, the police department and the DOJ. What I will not you do is spend taxpayers' money without coming before us.
Council chair.
Go ahead, councilman.
So you know, the police department is already top heavy. So it's like telling a a sergeant, by saying he's a road patrol sergeant. That's what they're trying to insituate at this position. It's a new position. Exactly, saying we had this officer go, this lieutenant who's no longer here, be put back into his duties. Where already the department is top heavy. We don't have enough people on the road. Lieutenants are not on the road. Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, guys, I, councilman, I want you guys to keep in mind, we are not here to tell the police department what to do and how to operate, and who should be doing what. That is not my role. The mayor wants to do that, that's his role, sure, go ahead and do it. I believe it stands before the police chief. Police chief should have that role. If the police chief wants these three positions and it's recommended by the Department of Justice, uh, come to the city council. Because in America, when the governor wants something, she goes to the legislative body. When the president wants something, they go to Congress. The mayor, you should become to Dearborn Heights City Council. You should not be just saying, sure, we're gonna bring you in from Westland and start working. That that just does not operate. I also don't want this person to lose their job, whoever's in this position, cause I don't know any of them. And and I'm sure they're doing a great job. But one of our union employees who've been here for twenty five, thirty years be working these positions? Can they have the opportunity like Bill Dishoom had? Can they have the opportunity like uh um Dana who's working now in the clerk's office? You know, can these individuals have these opportunities? You have s- some employees who live in the city of Dearborn Heights has been s- working for us for thirty years. Hey, you know what? I'm gonna make you the corner, you know, foyer coordinator. Yep.
I'm so, I'm so sorry, just one thing. I know, I know we keep saying DOJ. Actually, whatever we have is a consulting company that works with the DOJ. So it's a contractor, civil company that worked a program to through the DOJ. So it just uh basically is this consulting company that DOJ have that program that sends to police departments. So we do thank them for that, but just keep in mind, it's not the DOJ itself, it's a consulting company.
I've never met him, so I can't.
I met him one time and that's what they told me. I gave me their business card, so.
Yeah, they do not investigate.
So they're not DOJ, they're a consulting company that works through our program for the DOJ.
Really? Okay, guys, nothing from the audience, please.
Just to be clear, so.
Thank you. Councilman wants, I know I held you up.
No, I was fine.
Okay. Uh, Mariana, are we okay here? Making progress. So, I mean, what is our, uh, so let's add up the three that would be potentially removed. Uh, with the.
Uh, you're talking about the foyer, logistics and.
And and put in the HR confidential secretary in here. Any of these positions that wanna come before us, we can make a budget amendment, and we can budget them, and we can do it the right way. Um, I'm sure they went to civil service, they took the test, they did all the great work. That is amazing. They never came before council to approve them to be working with us.
Council chair.
Yes, sir.
The the HR um. Did come before us, we turned it down.
Yeah. And then I'd also like to add in the reasons for, like the councilman said, for the CDBG. What are you looking for, the HR? Uh, it's uh right here, I got it. I got three. HR is budgeted for fifty five thousand. So track the th- three total numbers if you need the, oh, you got the police ones, right?
Yeah, you're talking about the foyer logistic crime analyst. That would take us to uh two hundred and forty seven thousand six hundred.
That's how much we'd be saving?
That's how much we'd be saving. We're still short about um.
Check what we're short of. Is that also adding in the third person?
No.
No, add in the ordinance officer.
We have to add in that third person.
So if we remove those four positions, we're still short twenty one thousand nine hundred ninety four dollars and sixty four cents.
Add now plus what it is for another ordinance officer.
Uh, forty four thousand four hundred and.
How much?
Forty four thousand four hundred and seventy seven dollars.
Forty four thousand seven hundred?
No, I don't think that's correct.
Forty four thousand four hundred and seventy seven dollars.
For ordinance officer starting pay?
Yeah.
We can even over budget this one just a little bit. It's at forty four, just put it like.
I think it's a forty four thousand four hundred and seventy seven, yes.
George, I know this may be a little crazy that I'm asking you after an hour and thirty seven minutes into it, but have you been taking notes of things that we're removing and adding and doing any of that or no? Uh, can we give a round of applause for our great, does a great job. Thank you. George does a great job, hopefully. Our our notes here.
So if we add the third ordinance officer, we'll be short sixty six thousand four hundred and seventy one and sixty four cents.
Okay. I mean, look, I think us here is on a body. We have to make a tough decision as well.
You know, what we gotta take in mind too, also, when we cut or add a position, you gotta consider the fringe benefits.
Correct, correct, correct. Uh, I'm I've uh already, I've already put it in my mind, so we're like an additional twenty five thousand somewhere in there, right? That's why I said this one, we're gonna, a little over budget it. Add maybe another twenty five thousand, assuming they have longevity, they get health insurance, uh they get sick pay time and, you know.
That would take us to ninety one thousand four hundred and seventy one.
Okay. Put ninety one thousand there. Well, I just, I, I thought about this uh deeply, guys, on how to make this decision. And I said to myself, if we find, you know, give or take a hundred thousand, two hundred thousand dollars off in the budget, how do we make it right? Where do we fix this? Um, what I'd like to potentially see happen, and uh it, you know, it's obviously up to this entire body and what you guys decide and what you guys wanna do. I think what we can potentially do is, there's different ways we can do this. We are right now giving every director in the city a five percent raise. We can either A, eliminate that position, or we can uh minimize it and to make it, you know, two point five percent raise. But we're still giving them somewhat of a raise because we wanna make sure that we're paying good employees and not losing them to other cities. Uh, we can also find a way, I know that the police department and the fire department, and I thank them so much, uh have a I think the police department is about a million dollars in overtime, about eight hundred thousand in in the fire department. Think if we ask them each to cut fifty thousand dollars each, which is not much, very, very minimal, um, and we eliminate, uh, you know, the raises to two and a half percent, we could potentially see a surplus of almost a hundred thousand dollars versus the thousand sixty six, which was pulled by the mayor, which in reality, we would have been short close to uh maybe two hundred thousand dollars. But after making some of the cuts that we made, we could, we can see a a budget that's extremely fiscally responsible, like all of us have promised to do when we ran for the seat, to be in public office.
Council chair.
Yes.
But keep in mind, if we eliminate those positions from the police department, that means we're taking police officers and putting on those positions.
Correct.
We're gonna have less police officers on the on the road, so. I mean, most likely the mayor is gonna come back and fix it and.
That's fine, but if if we're cutting, I'm saying, two point five percent down, we should be able to see a surplus. And and then the administration with Plan Moran can figure out how to budget for those positions. Cause you can't just throw people out there and say, hey, pay them and we'll just take the money out of the reserves account, or we're gonna take it from our funds. It's not the way to operate. And it's definitely not the way to operate to say, we're gonna walk into the city and say, you got a job, you got a job, you got a job. It's not Wall for Wall Street.
Council chair.
Yep.
Also, I'd like to see, since we do have an engineering department, I'd like to see our.
We've requested the engineering department income.
Not, yeah, and I'm not, I'm not, I'm not talking about that, but I'd like to cut back on the spending at least half.
You know, so what we're gonna do is, after we pass the budget, because you have people here that are waiting, we are going to go into, and you can have my word on this, a a study session will go into play where we're gonna deep dive into this, or or dive deep into this, and and you can have those conversations, we can amend the budget, guys, this is a fluid document.
Council chair, I respect what you're saying, but I have no faith in anything we don't put on the record, and even if we do put on. And even if we put it on the record, it's 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 uh it's not ever followed.
Well, that's, you know, then that's when uh things from like the state treasury department can reach out to the administration.
If these adjustments are made, I know where I stand on my vote, because this is, we came here to work on this budget to try to get it passed. And I wanna see a surplus of.
Well, that's what we're doing here.
Yeah, it's, I I'm not satisfied with the surplus.
But did you go through this prior to this, or do you have those numbers, or are you just looking through it today now?
No, no, I'm trying to, well, well, we know way trim, we we got an engineering department to cut costs, but over the past two years, it's 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 exceeded. What it will previously paid, it makes no sense. We're in the millions. It's it's, don't worry about smiling, but it's uh we're, we're just paying unbelievable money. Then we have a fun scout, uh who does grants for us too. We should be eliminating, this, it's just.
There's a contract with them, so we have to be careful with eliminating.
We can cut, we're not eliminating.
Uh, and and I'm ultimately here to do what's best, whatever you guys wanna do, but I think most importantly here, we're trying to find a way to find a balanced budget with a surplus. So our city services are not shut down, so that our police, fire, all of our employees can go to work, and so that our residents can be protected. That is, that is our ultimate goal today, uh because clearly since April, we've met, and we have not been able to get here, and we're at the final minute. And I'm sorry to the residents that we are here and doing this to you guys, and I'm sorry to our employees at City Hall that we are doing this to you guys. I'm sorry for the fear mongering that has went across to the media and and emailed to the council. Um, but I want you to know that my colleagues and I are doing the best that we can. And I'm gonna also tell you that if, hopefully, we can pass this budget tonight, so that we don't go into a city shutdown, that we can have a uh uh go take a deep dive into this entire budget once again with Plan Moran, who works for the taxpayers. And and worked for us as well. Michelle has done a phenomenal job, but I think there's a lot of discrepancies in this. And we need to find a way to balance this out equally. Mayor, I think you said you had a few things that you wanted to state.
No, for the engineering, council chair?
Yeah.
For the engineering services, so you know, one of the things that, I mean, some of the stuff that we're working on is actually mandated by ego, you know, for the CSO projects that uh the engineering service, not mentioning obviously their name, um publicly, but we do have a a contract with them, and we are, we are required to have the CSO projects done, and that's why we had the engineering services. These that we have in the budget, that we went over before.
Thank you.
Council chair.
Thank you, man. Good job, guys. Yep.
Thank, ma- madam, chief of staff, I know we budgeted for thirty three firefighter fighters. Do we know how many we have right now? I know, I know, we're requested, and we only budgeted for thirty three.
Madam clerk, is that chief broken on? You can ask him to undo himself.
We budgeted for thirty three firefighters, and we currently have.
You know, we're trying to hire more, right?
Yes.
We're short like five or six?
Five, sure. Yeah, we're five short, so we are trying to hire more.
Is he on?
Hi, council, I'm here if you'd like me to answer.
Yeah, how you doing, chief? How many firefighters we have right now?
Oh, we're down six right now, so 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 that's where you see the difference, and so.
So how many do we have total, though?
So we have fifty three. Yeah, we have fifty.
This is all together, I'm just talking about the firefighter fighters. We are, cause a request of thirty nine wasn't the budget, we only budgeted for thirty three, so how many firefighter fighters we have? Not the battalion chief, not the fire inspector, not the marshal, not the lieutenant, no captains, just a firefighter.
And chief, if you don't know off the top of your head, that's okay, you can get back with us.
Yeah, it's thirty, we have thirty nine firefighters.
Thirty nine, or five. Okay.
Okay, how we're budgeting for thirty three then?
So, I know when when we get them hired, I think the plan was, when we get them hired, the overtime will will come down, and that's gonna gonna make up for the difference.
Yeah, but you you're saying we have thirty nine, but we're only budgeting thirty three regular off, regular firefighters.
No, we we only have thirty three. We we're supposed to have thirty nine, sorry.
Okay, so we're not budgeting for the five that we're short right now.
Correct.
So we have to keep in mind, council chair, the overtime for the fire department is eight hundred thousand, uh the projected for this year was nine hundred and fifty three, four fifteen.
Chief, I got a question for you.
Sure.
If say we are to cut your overtime by fifty thousand or seventy five thousand, you think that's something that you could uh work out with the firefighters and the men and women there?
I I I do, es- especially once um, once things start moving forward, I really hope to fill these spots. Uh, hopefully rapidly, and that will make a huge dent in that overtime.
How many have we interviewed, do you know?
Um, well, we haven't inter- interviewed any right now. We have one that's um a potential candidate that's just going through a background. He's already, I guess, so he's been interviewed. Um, and then we have a a several that have expressed interest. The contract hasn't settled yet. Once the contract's settled and becomes more public, I expect to have more people and we'll have the ability to hire basic EMTs as well.
Thank you. So you're saying you are okay with cutting it, say, by seventy five thousand?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay. Madam clerk, is our police chief on here? Is anybody uh from the directors on? Can you uh unmute the host for me, please? Hey, thank you so much, director, for being here with us today.
Sure.
Um, director, just for the record, if we were to find a way to balance this budget, would you be okay if we cut down um the overtime by seventy five thousand dollars, or maybe a hundred thousand dollars?
Well, you know, with um, you know, we're trying to do some hiring as well, right? Uh, we have three people in the academy right now. Um, the more people we hire, um.
The less overtime.
The less overtime. And I know we just interviewed four or five candidates last week, and I think HR got a email from councilman Saab. Um, saying that was, it was inappropriate to continue with the process of hiring those public safety officials. So I'm not exactly sure if we'd be able to do that, especially if we cut.
You said emailed him? Email the HR director?
That's what I was told, yeah.
Yeah.
He's right there, I don't know if he did or not. I did not.
Oh, yeah, I don't know if that's true. Do you have that email?
Yeah, I can send it to you. Yeah, so, but basically, um, and if we lose these civilian positions.
My my question to you is, would you be okay with us eliminating anywhere between seventy five thousand to a hundred? Would it affect you guys? If you're saying we're gonna hire five, which.
We we budgeted for seven more that we don't have.
Yeah, and we've already budgeted for seven additional, and we cut this down by seventy five thousand or a hundred thousand in overtime.
I mean, you, I can't promise that we could stay within that with the amount of overtime we'd need if we're we're taking officers and placing them in civilian positions.
Well, okay.
I mean, we'd have to cut our traffic safety program, which would then, you know, probably, uh, you know, impact the safety of our residents.
Are you saying you don't feel comfortable with taking away seventy five thousand dollars to balance the budget to potentially stop a uh citywide shutdown?
I mean, you could take whatever you you want, but all I'm saying is, we may have to come back for amendment.
Okay, if you need to come back for the seventy five thousand, maybe when we deep dive, we'll be able to get you that seventy five thousand back. I just want, you know, you you don't know that we wanna respect you guys, ask you guys to kind of help us and help this administration and help this, help the entire city and just find a way to balance this budget. And we can't do that, uh because we have, just for the record, we have cut from DPW, we have cut from um uh ordinance. We have cut from everybody except for police and fire. The fire said absolutely, no, that's okay, we'll figure it out. I'm hoping that you can kind of just mirror that same uh response.
Oh, of course, we can figure it out. We, you know, obviously, just like everyone else, like I said, we'd make some cuts.
Thank you. And then obviously, you know, we budgeted the police because you guys are, I believe, a lot bigger, so we budgeted, we budgeted the overtime a lot more. I believe a lot bigger, so we budgeted, we budgeted the overtime a lot more for for the police department than we did for the fire department, but like you said. We might be hiring five more, uh we budgeted for seven, hopefully they'll cut that down, but maybe even, who knows, two hundred thousand, three hundred thousand, that would be amazing for the taxpayers.
Of course.
Thank you, thank you, ma- Madam Clerk. Yep.
Uh with no disrespect to uh Director Swope, does does he have the authority to make that decision?
Uh, well, he's.
It's a recommendation.
It's his recommendation and.
Yeah, you asked him if it's possible, I mean, it's.
Okay.
That's okay.
Uh, do you disagree?
No, I'm just saying, I'm wondering, that's like, I mean, he's not the chief.
I know, but the chief's not on.
There's an officer, that's why that's officer over there. I'm just asking if, I mean, I'm 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 glad he did agree to it, but I just wondered, is that something that. If he gets together with the chief tomorrow, it's a new way.
Yeah.
You know, and then we budgeted, I mean, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, Mayor, did you have something?
No, I'm just saying, the Director spoke, Council Chair.
Yeah.
So he made a recommendation.
No, I made the recommendation, I asked him to.
No, I understand, but he agreed, so.
Thank you.
We're not gonna ask an officer, here.
That's okay.
Like I say, no disrespect to Director Swope whatsoever, I'm just wondering, you know.
How much are we off right now by?
So we were up by ninety-one, four seven, oh no, this is just a. By ninety-one, four seven, uh ninety-one, four hundred and seventy-one and sixty-four cents.
Okay, now let's just say we were to cut those, uh you know, seventy-five thousand times two, that puts us at one forty.
Uh, one fifty.
I'm sorry, what am I thinking? Forgive me, it's one fifty, and we are also going to say we potentially cut the raises for the directors from. You know, five percent to two and a half.
That's something, uh.
Come up with that number.
For uh directors and deputy directors?
Correct, and I know the deputy director received a five percent increase when he shouldn't have received, because we had just given him the raise, so that should have not even gotten a five percent increase.
Council Chair.
Deputy uh Controller. Yes.
Just for Director Swope, can you forward that email to me, please? Thank you.
He said he'll forward it to me and I'll forward it over. I I don't recall seeing any of it, but.
I don't see any in my emails.
He said he heard it from there, and then he said he has an email, so. God bless everybody, thank you all for being here today, by the way, we we appreciate each and every single one of you. So, you want, you guys wanna make a decision on this, and any other council member wanna make any other recommendations for this? Yep, go ahead.
Another possibility would be to have all the directors and the deputy directors give up one week's pay.
Uh, we can't have some.
I'll give up the whole month myself.
I know, if if I needed to give up mine as well, I think I would do that as well, but just for the full, full disclosure.
Council Chair. I'd like to see uh raises across the board, not just directors. So honestly, I'd be in in favor of removing all raises until everybody's able to get a raise.
Just want you to know, we've given police, we were giving firefighters, we gave, that that is not our spot to negotiate for the union. Today we are talking about the budget. Again, guys, when we dig deep, we can go, we can go back into this. You have, everybody is focusing in on dear old heights right now, you know? I know councilwoman, I and I just, I we we gotta be transparent, this is, we sign up for this type of work. So I know sometimes Friday at a seven o'clock, I don't wanna be here any more than you don't want to, but. Um, you know, we just, we have to make certain decisions. Any other council members wanna make recommendations?
Did we come up with a uh number for reducing the directors? They, we already gave it to them, I'm not in favor of reducing the directors' pay uh raise at all. How much was it, do you know?
From what I recall, the total uh increase for all of the five percent increases for all non-union positions is not just deputies and directors. It was, uh, I believe, forty thousand dollars total.
What is it?
It was forty thousand dollars total.
For what?
For the five percent increases for all non-union positions.
I don't, I still believe you guys deserve to keep something, and then if we can give you the additional, we wanna give that to you guys. But I just want you to do, it was forty-three thousand and some change, we can call it, you know. Uh, you know, I I don't know, I don't, I wouldn't know how to break that number down, but what we can do is in the recommendation, maybe Gary, you can help us on that. Say that we're gonna approve this budget, cause right now, if we take seventy-five thousand from each, we're gonna have some type of a surplus of how much?
Six to eight thousand.
Fifty-eight thousand, um with potentially another twenty thousand, that puts us at almost a seventy-five thousand dollar surplus. Everybody's happy, if we need to come back and make certain decisions, we can do that. Um, so why don't we do a recommendation, Madam Clerk, Gary, I don't know, I'm just kind of leaning on you a little bit to make sure that we're not putting ourselves in any tough spots. Um.
Council Chair, just one more.
But just real quick, what I'm trying to say is, we go through the recommendation of eliminating these three positions, four positions. Fixing up the numbers that we have to fix up.
And adding one.
And adding a. An ordinance officer.
Well, uh, Council Chair, it 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 may be helpful then to take a short recess for the clerk, council secretary. Ms. Hernandez and this gentleman, and perhaps yourself, or just to make sure we have all the things listed.
Okay.
And then just to end up having a motion that reflects all those changes, otherwise is gonna potentially miss something and be a problem.
Okay, let's let's come back, let's come back until about seven oh, seven oh five, we'll be back.
Sorry, before we crunch the numbers, can we vote on all the positions and whether or not?
We're not making a vote on anything right now until, it's gonna be in our motion.
Okay.
Yes, everything will be in our motion.
Recording stopped.
I think we should.
No, we're gonna go to the conference.
There's a bunch of people right there.
Yes.
Where are we going?
There are your numbers.
You said you're talking. On by my face.
Yeah, my Jeffrey's. So she might have material. I don't know. But I think. My son has many wives. They come along. Yeah. Second through. Yeah, there are. Yeah. Rob just. Yeah. We don't know this place. And my. We're. Or survey. Yeah. Sixty.
Right.
Elaine found the president. I got. Tonight. I can. I really. To. So. We. This is. Ah. So does anyone. Yes. So. That. Oh. So. So. Very. I mean. Seven. Don't. It's nine. Say. Yes. On. It's. Yes. So. Now. Charity. Number. Yes. From. And. Like. Some reason. That. What. I have. She. I think. You. Change. So. Not. This. Yeah. There's. Something. For example. Things. Yeah. Design. I can give her a move up here. Game.
Yeah.
Reality. All. Okay. I like to do it. The. Yeah. Yeah. Like. Then. I. I'm not a change. You. So. And. Well. In. That. I. Sorry. People must go. No. Oh. She was. Yeah. Yeah. By. Seconds. Yeah. And. Yeah. Anything. So. So. And. I. Then. Yeah. About. It's. This. Drive. The. Yes. Yeah. I had. Yeah. Yeah. I. Yeah. Yeah. I'm not. I was. Here. Yeah. I think.
There's. Writing.
Most. Well. Sorry. You know. Yeah. Yeah. So. Flying. It's. Shrill. You. Yeah. 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 What. So. I'm. Yeah. Actually.
Um. Yeah.
Yeah. Really. Yeah. Yeah. Sure.
Well.
Yeah. 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 So. Yeah. 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 Right. Yeah. Yeah. Some. That. There. Exciting.
Yeah. Well. They. Very.
I.
Right. I read. Yes.
Yeah. So. So. But you know. Most. Time. Okay. Right. Yeah. Oh. We. Can't. Yeah. We. No. Sure. Yeah. I'm. Yeah. Which is. Yeah. I. Joe. So. I. Have. Yeah. Yeah. And. Yeah. I'm. Yeah. Well. So. I. Think. So. Yeah. Yeah.
Oh. Yeah.
I. I. So. We. My. Yes.
Yes.
Always. I. I. Yeah. That's. Yeah. What. Sorry.
Yeah.
I. 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 Maybe. So. I. I. As. Yeah. Gosh. I. Do. So. How. Yeah. Yeah. Tomorrow. That's. I. What. Yeah. 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 Well. Yeah. Yeah. No. It's. Yeah. 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 It's. Yeah. Okay. Yeah. That. Yeah. They. Yeah. 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 So. Yeah. 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 We've. Yeah. Babies. Yeah. Yeah. Yours. Yeah. I started. What. What. And. Yeah. Bye. Yeah. Yeah. It's. Yeah. Darling. Yeah. I always. Thanks. I. Yeah. Yeah. Everybody. Yeah. And. Yeah. So. Yeah. No. Yeah. 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 Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. I know. Like. Yeah. 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 Yeah.
Relatively.
Such. Trying to see. Yeah. 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 Absolutely. Yeah. 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 Now. Yeah. So. Right. I. Yeah. 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 No. You. Yeah. 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 Seven. Yeah. 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 Oh. Yeah. 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 Yeah.
Now.
Guys. I don't say. Yeah.
Personal.
Yeah. Yeah. It's. Yeah. 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 I. Yeah. We're. Yeah. So. Yeah. No. Yeah. Yeah. That. Yeah. Yeah. So. Yeah. 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 Yes. Yeah. Yeah. I. I. Yeah. 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 Oh. Yeah. 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 I. Yeah. 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 When I. You know. Yeah. 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 Start getting. I just. Yeah. 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 Oh. So. Yeah. Yeah. So. Yeah. Then. Then. Was. So. I said. No. It's. Question about. Yeah. 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 I think. Yeah. 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 I. Said. So. I'm. Again. So. Okay. Yeah. Yeah. And then. Yeah. 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 So. Yeah. 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 Two. Yeah. Yeah. Same. Picture. Yeah. She. Yeah. 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 Like. Yeah. 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 And. Yeah. So. Yeah. Yeah. Like. Next. Next. Yeah. 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 I'm sorry. Yeah. All right. Show us. Yeah. Like. Yeah. And. Yeah. Yeah. Wow. I. Yeah. 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 There's. Pretty. Wow. We. And. My. Yeah. Yeah. While. Yeah. 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 Into. Prayer. Like. Yeah. Not. Really. But. In. Yeah. 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 No. He didn't. So. Between. Just. Yeah. And. Plans. So. I mean. I. I. Power. I. That. Yeah. But. Pretty. Pretty. But. So. Yeah. I'm. Yeah. And. Our. We. Yeah. But. Um. Yeah. Yeah. And. So. They. There. He. It's. So. Yeah. And. So. It. Uh. Like. Yeah. 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 No. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
They.
Yeah. 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 So. Yeah. 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 Well. Yeah. You know. Yeah. Yonder. Yeah. 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 It's. Yeah. Oh. Yeah. So. Yeah. 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 Up. Yeah. 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 Whatever. Sure. Yeah. 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 I. Yeah.
Yeah. Just like. Probably more people. Yeah. He was three.
Just. A lot. Yes. Yeah. 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 Awful. Yeah. I don't know. Yeah. Yeah. You. Jumping. Okay.
Yeah.
I. I. Yeah.
I see.
Yeah. We'll catch you later. Uh. Your. Yeah. 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 Well. I. And. Your. Yeah. Yeah. Oh. Yeah. 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 Oh. Like. Like. So. No. 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 Right. All that seems. They're not. Oh, that. Yeah. Crazy. I'm silly. Again. That's always. And. Diabetic. And. Shoot. Really. So. Uh. Here's. Next. Respect. Well, I'm not to wash. Actually.
I almost.
I guess. Yeah. Yeah. I didn't. Did that. And. And. Richard. And Jamie. And. Oh. Santa. Uh. Sixty seven. Have supply. No. Only one. Exactly. That's. Right. How do you?
You're.
It's. Now that Noah's graduated. I can. Yeah. I. Yes.
Sorry.
I'm. But. Then what I was gonna say. Yeah. I really didn't. I have. Yeah. Right. All the. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
You know.
Yeah.
We were. So. It's. First time.
I. She's.
I don't.
Yeah. I'm. I can't. They. I was. Keep talking. I'm. They. Stay. She stayed. Yes. Years ago. But. Actually.
But. These.
They. Yeah.
I'm.
These. These.
I don't. It's. Space. About. Says.
Yeah. Yes.
There's. There's. Things.
Marion. Really.
Just. All in.
It's.
The.
Yeah. That's.
Well. It is. Uh. Well. So.
So. From the.
Well. Then. Everything.
Your. Organize.
I. Everything you're looking for. All. You still.
Ready. Right.
You want. But. Your body. Black. The same. Situation. Body. No, we're good. Blue. Body. Abandoned. Yeah. Drunk. Where. He's. So. Anything. Yeah. Yeah. So. But. I guess. The. Probably. That's. But. It was.
Theory.
You know. I don't want. I just. He did. Okay. There. What he's doing. I. There.
Yeah.
Abdul. David.
Talking. Yeah. Got a. He's. Yeah. Oh. That was. I. Yes. I. I don't know. It's. You're. You know. You wouldn't have been. It's.
Yeah.
They do. I had. It's.
Yeah. It's.
Yeah. Close. Yeah. No.
You're. My. Congratulations.
Oh, yeah.
You sound hilarious.
Yeah. Well.
Tomorrow.
Oh, yeah. The other thing.
It's about. The last Sunday. I don't want. Funny. So.
It was.
All.
You had. That. So. At. Yeah.
Well. You've been. The funny is all. And. But.
Oh.
But. And.
Yeah.
Now. I. I want.
Benedict.
So. I can. That.
Yeah.
I'm not.
Oh. I was. Oh. Oh.
I can. Stress.
Yeah. We can.
I thought. Oh. Before that. I.
Yeah. Well. I.
But. I say. I'm not. I. Hold on. And. To. I want. I want. Qualify. That's. You know. They want. But. Stay. There.
Yeah. Yeah. So. One. That. Right. She would be. I know. I'm. Was one particular. That. Sister. Was.
I didn't want.
And they. Will be. They. Found. The. In. South. And.
But.
I.
Oh. I mean.
Yeah.
What. I don't.
In.
You know. You. I wish I was. But. Oh. Yeah. Won't you know. That. On Facebook. And we see. With. With. Water. Single ass.
Yeah. Wow. Because. So. It's. And. Into the game. For telling. I believe. I. Say. So. I. Yeah. It wasn't. And. Went. How. Kids were. Our. Small. Yeah. That's. You know. House. And. And. Free. Yes. Which.
That's. Some.
Yeah. Sounds. Sounds. Oh. Wait. Someone. How. Not. Yeah. 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 I went to. Yeah.
Okay. Channel four.
And. English.
A lot. I forgot.
These. Some. Real. Now. And. They. My brother. They. Was. Down. Oh. Who. Yeah. All day. She. She. Yeah. No. I think you can. She. I.
That's.
I. Harry. I believe. He. People. See.
Love you. So. Hey, I got. The. Own.
Well, they are. Pushing. They were. But. But.
But. Oh.
Oh.
Oh. Oh.
I don't. To. Very. He's in here.
So. Abdul. She.
Count. Yeah.
If. So. I'm. 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 Yeah. Thank you. That's. So. With. What's. No.
Oh, my.
That's. They're all. Yeah.
Yeah. And. Typically. Good. New. Week. New construction. Yeah. Yeah. Right. There's. A lot. You. Yeah. Like. Well. Yeah. I wish. Very. Yeah. I mean. Really. So. I.
They.
I. Well. They.
Why. Didn't. I'm. Yeah.
See.
I heard that. I'm.
Butter. You. You. It's.
You. Single.
We. Yeah. I'm. I was. Also. Crazy. Crazy. Sorry. Yeah. I. I think. I'm. Okay. It's. So. You know. I. I. I got. You're. I don't. Set.
I don't understand.
Cause.
Yeah.
So. So.
I've been. They're. The. Do not tell the police. You know. Just. They. Some. There's. Fire. Nobody.
She. Yeah. Part.
What about? What about? You never. I know. My. Something. What about? We have a question. We have nine. About. For. Then. Something. You say. You're burning. Or something. Just. Something. Or. That's. I got. The. That was. It was. Comfort. Yeah. Yeah. I mean you wanna know the truth both of them are I didn't like do you like it or not my opinion I'm gonna speak my uh did it not a thing but we're going his name my next most of all the events no it's no problem I never had a problem well it is and I ask you when this is about why you're gonna want more and and it's no problem public when I and I told that was a incident I look seven you want to close session oh okay I want to do whatever I can about just preparing yeah several dollars fashion but it's like
I don't know
weird I do it but I think interesting oh yeah see the first side started as I entered high school yeah
no you can't because if I saw something
the guys I was by the way guys I was the mistake like right in eighty five zero zero three she's not allowed and ah I know and we don't I bet I went to first year but here's the thing we're here we can why not deny that she don't know she's like yeah but Denise yes you're guilty now they say guilty you want
no we weren't
I love
alright
alright good those were the good old days lost some others good idea it's yeah face right every time he said he said a couple times every time he has a stage he said this that's what I don't know that's what by the way that she he goes to church every week he represented ninety percent of even when please no it's actually but then he makes oh he made the he made that's that's how he lost yeah that's how he lost it won't it's been eighteen years
but then right exactly so the deep the last
I want he's like
and it was
it's been a lot
it was like I don't like
right by grab my
I want
just grab the key
yeah it's a nice
it goes to say I can deal with different
there is a
I'm having a little church they're gonna get me and she's gonna be like oh my gosh ladies yeah stop calling labels on my I don't put them yes my father went to that looks like something else even below girls like they didn't really
here in my dad
you know what I gotta be scared of he wants to sit before
I want it
when I get some or the white I have to sit before
that was
he wanted black and white so he want started lots of baby blue to like
yeah
so you're like sent back here
yeah
you're you're a diner yeah you know like no you know like so when he hears that my uh we had some we don't the dusk and we didn't go to well he bought the house the next door just for a start it looks like I've got cars but then he wanted a lunchroom it was bigger than this room we did all the booths were like that that we got all the chrome like twice over time the bar stool he was uh I like he was starting good one yeah yeah he was uh alright
maybe
where is he at
it's not
we both oh yeah that's that hey yeah outside one day I came out of the river god bad you sort of I wanna ask him that's all no I go fold it they're found on the paper they were all is that you see it it's just all the time Jane
still either less
okay yeah I think it's
my spine
I got tested all the tests
are in New York
it's actually every time I get mad at my wife I tell they just Allah I would like to collect are you serious and I and I I'm not get arrested if we're gonna be here will you be I'll never get arrested I'll never get arrested mobile don't say the classmate you get arrested mobile don't in the Philly city it's yeah that's it what's up you in a way where and I'm based
you know they gotta repay them it's pretty much and yellow like gold
I and it's supposed to be
yeah yes I'm I wanted this
try oh I'm gonna take him to us oh man sleeping to them you're sleeping oh man ready to we are sleeping to them right
so it's a little oh we're running sorry
suggest
yes
don't hate I no let's say yes let's say hey take this take this said a short face to face and the drop Danny it's sad right away from Long Hill what am I told what am I told I did thirty what's nine oh yeah we're sticking up for somebody getting molesting but yeah inshallah in the but they are you pressing you're pressing with somebody that's sticking up for 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 somebody getting what with each other is the is the the I don't you gotta think about it not right oh yes
we're hungry
I'm very yes I'll swing up the little mobile mobile doctor can you get the show rolling please come on I came here just to see you fine thank you thank you
thank you
I'm listening anybody see my gamble man clerk come give me
did you have it when the meeting started
yeah yeah he was yeah somebody who happened to the government you left the other piece
you too
right here let me put it back here detailed clerk coming back for recording are we recording
recording in progress
we are back here ladies and gentlemen I know we said seven oh seven I think we might eight oh seven but we're back um you know I wanna first and foremost thank the chief of staff Mariana I wanna thank Mahdi from the controller's office really Mahdi was a rock star inside that room we went line item by line item we had to make certain decisions uh I believe councilman uh Conson will have to make some amendment Councilman Ahmad will also make the additions of what we did what we've forgotten mistakenly made was congratulations to the four sergeants or the three I believe it was four sergeants that were appointed uh or or were got the uh promotion and so we were still budgeting them as a regular officers and we didn't budget them as sergeant so our numbers were off uh thank you to those who sent us that information as well um so we are going to amend this motion I believe there is going to be a surplus of
one seventy seven thousand and two hundred and forty one dollars
we'll see a hundred and seventy seven thousand dollar uh surplus this will allow us to potentially go back with the administration meet up again maybe apply for those positions even though they went they went to civil service but make sure that they come to the council so we can properly uh uh give them those those positions uh but in the meantime um we are going to have the councilman Constan amend his motion and then I'm going to ask for the second it was by councilman Saab and then the decisions and things that were changed will follow through with the motion with councilman
yeah before the second
correct okay well before
council chair
yes
that's right um I'd like to state that I don't think it was too cool very disrespectful myself and the other three council members that weren't invited back for that special meeting that you held back there uh but everyone else and we didn't get invited to come back there very very disrespectful
I I just want you know I apologize I can't make the decision for
you don't have to apologize
it's okay I just want you to know I will advise a special legal counsel it's okay
if I may
yeah please go ahead
when issues came up councilman if if I may
you don't don't excuse no thank you
that's okay
if I may I just wanna just clarify that there were not decisions and
no input right
they were advised not to end up engaging deliberations just to engage
and what we spoke about during the meeting
in the details in the meeting so
thank you again councilman I'm sorry I know you're feeling it's okay it's okay
alright let's just fun
alright move on please
so councilman Constan would you like to amend your motion
council chair
yes
I'd like to amend my motion
turn on your mic is it on
yes
okay go ahead
like to amend my motion to uh add the following moreover in adopting this budget resolution the following changes shall be incorporated in and made to the detailed materials most recently presented as part of the city council agenda be part of the detailed budget to arrive at and adopt the final budget uh including changes and councilman
thank you councilman so that change would be adding one ordinance officer in the ordinance department adding four additional sergeants position in the police department amending the fifty patrol officers budget to forty five positions amending all TPOAM clerical position to reflect the correct salaries stated in the collective bargaining agreement removing the HR confidential secretary position removing FOIA coordinator in PD logistic coordinator in the PD department crime analyst court uh crime analyst in the PD department removing seventy five thousand from the police department overtime removing seventy five thousand from the fire overtime removing the five percent salary increase for the deputy controller and we would have a surplus of hundred and seventy seven thousand two hundred and forty one dollars
thank you councilman
councilman Saab would you like to second that
no
okay ma'am clerk can somebody else second it Gary can somebody else second it
council chair
hang on one second
yes someone else can second the motion to amend
did you wanna second motion made by councilman Constan seconded by councilwoman Denis Denis Menelowski Maxwell uh any other discussion
council chair
yeah
the discussion I just have I wanted to I wanna approve this budget with it being coming back in front of council I'd like to see at least another seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars shaved off the budget asking for it today but I'd like to see it off I'd like it to come from our our you know our engineering that we're paying out and I tried to discuss that for one into the meeting but you guys we're gonna talk about it back there so I wanna put that on the record I'd like the administration to come back we have a special meeting to amend the budget to amend to prove uh uh administration come back to shave seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars additional because I believe we're we either gotta eliminate a position or eliminate a company it's one of the two we shouldn't create a position and just hiring outside third party companies working and just charging three or four times down low I understand we have we have to have streets fixed and CEO soul programs but that's what our engineer is for he's a public he's a he's a P so
I agree I agree and so
I'd like if if the amendment's made I would like that to include it into this amendment and 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 that would make me vote
so I want you to know this is a fluid document so when we meet up on Tuesday you can put a resolution at any meeting and say I went through these documents this is what I wanna have fixed this is what I'd like to see taken off we can have a study session on it later on and then you would take it to a council meeting and you would vote on that and any this document can be voted on anytime you want it's not just today today is to go before the fiscal year of July first which is Monday well that's what vote we have before us today there's a surplus of a hundred and seventy seven thousand look I know all of us are really tied into this you have that fiduciary duty uh but I would I I would hope that you know for the residents seeing that we have the surplus we can all vote on this unanimously because all of us in here including the residents including those who are here and on zoom have been waiting tirelessly for this um but either way we have a motion on the table I'd like to make a vote on this
yes
discussion
what is that
you can take discussion
I did you wanna do some more discussion
yeah I'm 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 not having a lot of things on this budget I just and I don't wanna pass it just put it out for having on paper and say we passed and then work on everything later
what what is the
I I don't like a lot of the cuts like I mentioned cuts in the the DPW um there's there's uh taking away part of the uh raises for the rectors
we got the we got the raises we did have the raises and we didn't cut anything from DPW and right now we have
six hundred thousand dollars cut and I agree with councilman Saab I mean we should we we should have something on record with uh saying that we aren't
what I'm saying is you don't have to have one you can do that on Tuesday
you know how many times I've tried to amend the budget in my seven years here and I always say it it can it never happens very rarely you know one out of twenty times you know it'll go through
council chair
I mean I
councilman
oh that's fine I'm no I'm good I'm done
okay councilman Constan
the only problem is and I've been through this when I was in the state legislature I mean the the deadline is here and I don't hear anybody saying these additional changes can't be made but we we have got some numbers finalized everyone worked hard we you worked hard today and the chief of staff so we need to to have an up or down vote
council chair I'm just asking I'm asking to remove seven hundred thousand dollars from the budget too I'd like to put on the record with this amendment to the budget that another seven hundred fifty thousand dollars be sent to the administration to chop off and bring back I'm not saying that it has to happen today
yeah that's
and I just want that entered to this motion
okay can we somehow add that to the notion that the okay councilman Constan will you amend your motion to
I I I think it already is I think it already is
no no but amend it one more time so that the administration says that they're gonna look into finding us seven it's a way of cutting seven hundred fifty thousand hang on one second Roger please so the motion is not saying you are going to cut seven hundred fifty thousand the motion says you're gonna look into it and it's not asking for seven hundred fifty thousand dollars today let's say in the fiscal year in the fiscal year, you're going to look into, um, finding seven hundred and fifty thousand somewhere. But I see our Gary Macti wants to say something. As a special legal counsel, go ahead.
Well, I, I was just going to say you could have it, have it taken care of as an incidental motion after this main motion. It kind of will
Okay.
bunk things up if you try to include it. I don't know that it really works with the overall motion since you're already.
I like that.
So council chair, so just not waste time. Can we, can we pause this motion, put that motion first?
Motion on the table, you have to vote on this. You can then suspend the rules and add another move.
Are we going to suspend the rules?
Hey, you're going to pick a vote on that. I don't think anybody's here is disagreeing with you.
I agree. No, it is disagreeing.
Okay.
Yeah, listen, I, I said this in the beginning of the meeting. We, we want to move forward on this. You know, we want to make this as smooth as possible. So there's a motion on the table. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
No.
No.
Ma'am clerk, please take roll call.
Hassan Ahmad?
Yes.
Nancy Bryan?
Yes.
Tom Wenzel?
No.
Denise Melonowski Maxwell?
Yes.
Robert Constan?
Yes.
Mo Badun?
Yes.
And Hassan Saab?
No.
Motion carries.
Thank you, ma'am clerk. Does, do you want to put a motion on? People to suspend the rules?
Council chair, I'd like to suspend the rules to add a motion.
Motion to suspend.
Hang on one second.
You just adopted a motion to amend the main motion. I don't know that you actually adopted the overall amended motion.
We did. They read it.
Did they?
Yes.
Yeah, we did it. Uh, we did the motion, then we amended that motion. And then moreover, we amended it again.
We had long.
Oh, okay. I'm, 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 no, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry. I'm just saying I didn't, I thought it was, uh.
We amended the motion and councilman Constan and councilman.
So you both, you did that both at the same time?
Yeah, councilwoman, woman. Menelowski Maxwell.
Menelowski Maxwell.
I stand corrected, sir.
Thank you.
Okay.
You stand correctly or incorrectly?
No, I stand corrected. I misheard.
Okay.
Now, the city clerk got it right.
Okay, that's all. Okay.
So we, we need to vote on, uh, suspension of the rules?
Okay, does somebody want to make a motion to?
I did. I, I seconded rules.
Okay, motion made by councilman Saab. To suspend the rules, seconded by councilman Ahmad. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye. Aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Councilman, what would you like your motion to be?
I'd like my motion to be to break, uh, the administration within ten days to chop off another seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the budget and bring it back to council.
I think you said look into.
Yeah.
Chop. Well, I, I, I want to remove from the budget, not looking. The administration is going to come back, say zero.
I know. Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
Did you do your analysis to find the seven hundred and fifty thousand? You did, you know, for why not in ten days, you bring them also to the.
I want the administration to do it. It's their job, not mine.
They don't know what you want done.
I want just seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the budget chopped off.
I know, but from what?
I want it from, from the engineering department.
What, did you see that seven hundred and fifty thousand?
I want flat Moran. I, um,
Wade, Wade, Wade.
And all the consultants uh, drop down, or that way we're going to either remove the, uh, the engineering department and have an outside party do it, or it's going to be one of the two. We're overspending on these projects and we're not getting nothing in return by spending more. By us, by us even adding the engineering department in the past year, we've exceeded the amount that we've spent in three years.
Okay. Okay, so your motion is there's a, there's a number. What do we even, what does that department even look, can you tell me, Matty? Is it even seven hundred and fifty thousand?
It's, it's not the engineering department. It's, it's third parties.
Two.
Council chair? Like spread across the water department, the engineering department. It's not just.
Right, contractual services.
It's contractual services across all, many different departments. So it's not going to be seven hundred and fifty thousand. It's not going to be seven hundred and fifty. It's not going to be seven hundred and fifty thousand from one department. It's going to be seven hundred and fifty thousand total from the contractual services relating to engineering. That's what, uh, councilman Hassan's office.
I'm, I'm, but I'm asking contractual services that we spent so far this year, or can you tell me what we spent last year?
I can get that information to you by tomorrow, this end of the weekend.
So you, you know what? Give it back to us on Tuesday. Take your time, enjoy the week. You've been working real hard.
I mean, I am going to work this weekend, but we're good.
Thank you.
Council chair?
Councilman Constan.
And, and, uh, with all due respect to councilman Saab, maybe we can refer this and make this part of our study session.
Well, that's what I was thinking about.
We, we, go ahead, go ahead.
It's okay. So you want to give a timeline, I think ten days is short, Fourth of July weekend. You got to give at least twenty days here, councilman.
I'll get them for four teams.
Okay. What is that, what is that day? So we know from today?
Twelve?
July twelfth. Mayor, do you think you guys could look at something like that?
We'll look into it, council chair.
And if not, then the council is going to come with a budget amendment of seven hundred and fifty thousand.
Right. We want to make it falling Tuesday, the sixteenth, or by the fifteenth?
Yeah, let's do the sixteenth.
I'd, I'd rather have it that Friday because we're going to have a meeting there.
Yeah, we're not going, we're not going to do it. No, you have a, a meeting on the eighth, the second of the last Tuesday. You don't have any.
Ninth, ninth is our next regular meeting.
Yeah, so you can do it on the sixteenth. All right, that's a good, uh, observation.
Sixteenth?
Yeah.
By July sixteenth, and then we'll have to have someone repeat the motion.
Yeah. You want to amend your motion, councilman?
Yes, I'd like to amend the motion to have the administration look and remove seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in contractual services by July sixteenth. Or else I would, there are councils going to come with a.
Okay, that's your motion. That's not a discussion.
No, that is my motion.
I know. Okay. No, we, we approved, we, we voted on a closed session.
No, I mean, uh, suspension.
Yeah.
Yes.
Suspend the rules. Now we have a motion by councilman Saab to give finding seven hundred and fifty thousand cut by July sixteenth. Can I get a second? Motion made by councilman Saab, seconded by councilman Ahmad. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Now, do we have to go back to a open session? I mean, uh, no, this is not under the rule.
Yeah, no, you.
Rules are fine.
You, you entertain that.
Okay, next up, we have comments from.
Council chair? I'd like to.
Hang on one second, councilman. One second. One second. Next up, we have comments from council members. Are you giving a comment on this part?
Yeah, yeah, on the budget. I'd like to take my no vote and say yes vote because we got the motion passed.
Oh, great.
He choose his vote on the budget. Yes.
You can't do that.
Yeah, do that.
You can't, you can't. I thought it's towards the end of the meeting till the meeting's.
Come on, guys, guys.
That's fine.
Good job.
That's fine.
Thank you. Bye.
Thank you. Any other, uh, council members? Any comments from council members? Mayor? Have a good day. Thank you. I will just say just a few things. First and foremost, the councilman once so. I apologize. It was not my, I just took the recommendations of our special legal counsel. Uh, I would have wanted every single person, including the ones in the audience and those on Zoom to be there as well. Most importantly today, uh, to those who voted yes, I know even though councilman Saab's vote was a no, I'm sure he really in his heart wanted to vote yes. Uh, I commend you guys. Thank you to Mahdi Badun. This man, he needs a round of applause to thank. And, and thank you to Mariana and thank you for telling, allowing Mahdi to stand next to you because at first I know you said you want to take on the heat, but he really was a huge asset. And also a round of applause to Mariana from the chief of staff. Um, I'm, I am a little disappointed that I'm ran gap. I mean, if Michelle wasn't here, that's one thing, but you know, when you're this big company, you should have been here with us too. You see that we're all over the news, uh, you know, to, to not be here tonight, I'm pretty disappointed on that. Um, I also want to say, uh, thank you guys and I know all you guys want to go home. I will keep my message short. Happy fourth. Anyone else?
Council chair?
Councilman Saab?
I'd also like to, uh, thank Matty and the chief of staff, Mariana. You guys did a phenomenal job, uh. This is kind of disappointing that we had nobody from any, any sector of the departments here in the city. Uh, it's, 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 and it's ironic. Everybody resigned today or the day before. Just put that to the record. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other comments from councilmen? Okay, going to see nudge announcements from administration?
I would just make one announcement. Chair, we, uh, we had a successful veterans, uh, seminar. Um, the first one we've had in the city, we had, uh, Veterans Treatment Court from Dearborn and Veterans Treatment Court from Redford. We had seven attorneys present. Um, we highlighted some numbers of new changes that have been, uh, uh, by the federal government that Dearborn is implementing, and we've worked with Dearborn with our veterans. Um, and it's the first start. It's on our website and we will continue doing so.
Thank you. Thank you.
I just wanted to say thank you and we do apologize that there was no one from the controller's office, but this had already been pre-scheduled, uh, when we hired the people that were there. Um, so it was a transition. So we are changing our HR director and our comptroller starting next week.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hello. Good evening, everyone. I'm speaking as the city elected treasurer. Um, this is my bi- biannual announcement to let you all know that the tax bills have gone to print and that they will be mailed out next week and should be in your homes. And if you have any questions, please cause, call the treasurer's office at three one three seven nine one three four one zero. And there, all the information is available online July first. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other announcements? Seeing none, we'll go to public comments. Comments, uh, I'm asking you have three minutes. Please state your name, the city residing, the street that you live on, this gentleman up here.
Oh, he wants to go first, right?
Yeah, thank you, mister.
Evening, I'm from region one A. I'm on the executive board there. I represent a hundred and thirty-seven retirees, a hundred and thirty-seven thousand retirees.
Thank you.
And, uh, I know some of you, I've been on the screening commission for over forty years. You're going to face this problem again in five years and it's going to be massive. It's called the medical that you're paying for your employees currently. I am with a group that is going for Medicare for all or single payer. If we don't get into this, the city's going to go broke paying medical, and if they throw it on employees, they're not going to be able to afford it. Now, some of the examples I have, my friend just got a knee operation. Two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. That same knee operation in Canada is eight thousand and Australia is four thousand. And don't be buffaloed by it takes a long wait for this stuff. It doesn't in Canada. Canada is number three in the world in healthcare. We're thirteenth. We have the highest mortality rate for babies in black and brown in the inner city. Our, our seven thousand, eight thousand dollar deductibles. Your car insurance is covered in there. All that will go away. All the deductibles will go away. You've got to get on board with this. I've been to other city councils and they pass resolutions that they'll, they'll help me. That's all I want. But thank you for your time. I appreciate it. And again, you guys are great in the audience. You really are. You suck our.
Thank you. Anyone else, uh, from the audience? How you doing, sir? Please state your name, the city residing, and the street that you live on.
Good afternoon, Hassan Eun from Dearborn. I just wanted to tell the council today that thank you for approving the budget. Overwhelming for the residents, you know, because, uh, July first, you know, people go on Fourth of July weekend, you know, we're not going to sit here and come around Sunday, right? We're on a barbecue, right, Mo? Well, Mr. Saab, seven hundred and fifty thousand. I think we should work together as a team, you know? Stop arguing with each other, stop pointing the fingers, you know? Dearborn Heights is a good city. You know, I come here every time. You guys respect me, especially council chair and all you guys are just beautiful over here. I just want to thank everybody for coming out here. Uh, at this time, uh, we should, uh, make Dearborn Heights great again, two thousand twenty-four, if you know what I mean.
Hey.
I can't talk political, but unless we say, uh, Trump two thousand twenty-four.
Order.
Thank you.
Sorry, can't have you do that. No political talk here over here. It's freedom of speech. Thank you. That is, thank you. Anyone else from the audience? Thank you so much. Please state your name, the city residing, and the street you live on. Do not give me your address, just the street.
Hello.
How you doing?
My name is Lori Moline. I live on Berwin Street. I've lived in Dearborn Heights for thirty years. I have never come to a city council meeting, ever. This is my first.
Welcome.
Here's, here's something that I would really like to make a point at. While some of you were back there trying to get this job done, some were back here wanting to go home. Okay? I'm not talking the audience. I'm talking the council members. We hear you. We see you. Elections. This is a tough job. These guys have a tough job. You're part of that. Tom? He apologized to you at the last meeting. Why? I should have listened to you. You hold weight. You all hold weight. Use your voices, work together, and don't let this happen again.
Thank you.
Please.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the residents?
I got one minute. Can I speak my minute?
No, please. Anyone else in the audience? Seeing none, we're going to move it to Zoom. Ma'am clerk, I see we have two hands up.
Hannah's iPhone.
Hanan's iPhone. You can move on to Margaret King.
Okay. Then I'll go back.
Good afternoon, guys.
How you doing, Margaret? Please state your name, the city residing, and the street that you live on.
Margaret King, Mayfair Street, Dearborn Heights, Michigan. Um, I was just wanting to know with this budget, thank you guys for passing a budget. Um, I know we still have some work done and we'll get there. But is there any, by any chance, any way we could add in a grant writer to help, you know, combat some of these costs?
If we chop the seven hundred and fifty thousand.
Huh?
I said if we chop the seven hundred and fifty thousand that councilman Saab was asking for, maybe we can then.
Okay. All right. Thank you, guys. Have a good night.
Margaret, thank you. Uh, ma'am clerk, try Hanan's iPhone one more time.
Oh.
Uh, just to see. Okay, no, doesn't seem like.
He's gone.
She's gone. So go ahead. I know we have.
Vladimir.
Yep. Vladimir.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
Uh, thank you Vladimir Rozowski, six eight two one, North Leviathan Street, Dearborn Heights. Um, just wanted to say a couple, a couple of things. Um, glad the budget passed and the city will keep working. Um, if you guys are against fear mongering, then why did you have to wait till last minute to talk numbers? You felt like, um, last meeting would have been great to do the same exact conversation. Um, now, I'm not sure why, um, you felt like the last minutes, uh, kind of hmm, college, uh, college all-nighter is an acceptable way to handle a situation like this, but, uh, that's okay. Um, perhaps, uh, perhaps there are ulterior, ulterior motives, uh, over here. Um, and, uh, you just wanted to see the public uh, have have an eyes on this conversation with the news or something. Um, a couple of things, I, I, I felt like there was, uh, there was a recess called out, but, uh, maybe there was a, um, there was a missed, uh, vote on that, right? um, there was a missed uh vote on that, right? Um, to take a break. Um, and um the final thought about the positions uh that you and the cuts you guys are making. Um, just feel like if maybe you put a few well-paid positions um on the docket, that maybe we could continue having good things happen around the city. I've seen a lot of engineering efforts actually happen here. Um, or start happening and uh it feels good. Um, feels like an odd place to cut money. This is it. Thank you.
Thank you so much, sir. Have a great night. Next up, council hates police. Please state your name, the city residing in the street that you live on. Uh, please unmute yourself.
Okay.
Did they put their hands on?
I don't even
Yeah, I figured they just want us to read their name out loud.
Maybe I'm going to look and see.
Any other? Seeing none. Uh, can I see a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second, motion made by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilman Ahmad. Any other, any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries.